And welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person on Boston City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the April 24th meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Variano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 10th, 2024 School Committee Meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair Robinson, and good evening. I hope everyone had a restful and enjoyable April break. I want to start tonight by providing a quick update related to our long-term facilities plan. This work is not just about buildings. This work is about ensuring all students have access to rigorous learning and enrichment experiences that inspire them. We've made tremendous progress on understanding the condition of our schools' physical spaces and looking critically at the types of experiences each school currently provides. As we think about school closures, mergers, reconfigurations, we must ensure that any impacted students will have a clear transition pathway to a high-quality experience. And we need to be responsive to the unique needs of different student groups, reflective of the full diversity of BPS, and a particular focus on our students with disabilities, our multilingual learners, and our transition and older multilingual students and others. We have an enormous amount of work ahead, but we've also done an enormous amount of work already to expand access to high-quality student experience, including the 10 major capital projects that are already underway. We've also done a great deal around key programmatic investments, new partnerships, and early college and career pathways. And we're preparing to take some additional steps next year. Closing, merging, and reconfiguring schools alone will not ensure the delivery of this experience. And it's really only one set of strategies for ensuring all students have access to that high-quality student experience. We are continuing our conversations with school leaders, school communities, and our central office teams to map out some initial mergers, closures, and reconfigurations as an early step towards delivering on the long-term facilities plan. This work takes time. It takes collaboration and careful planning, which is why we've said from the beginning that it will take years and a great deal of resources to meet our goal of every student having access to a high-quality student experience. We plan to bring our next phase of recommendations forward at the May 22 meeting as part of our Long-Term Facilities Spring Update. It's important that we only take on new projects that we can manage well with students at the forefront. And we've heard clearly from this committee and from other stakeholders that any new proposals need to be connected to the broader vision of BPS. And we're looking forward to sharing that vision with all of you soon. At the last School Committee meeting on April 10th, I shared that we had sent out invitations to exam schools earlier in the day. This was nearly a month earlier than originally planned for invitations to be sent. And I want to again commend the team for hard work to get invitations out earlier than in previous years in response to feedback from our families. Tonight, I'll share some initial data on the invitations that went out. Before we share the data, I just want to remind the committee members and the public that we've had five different versions of admissions criteria in the last five years. My team is continuing to analyze additional data to better understand the impact of this year's policy change. And we'll share that at a later date. For the purposes of tonight, we just wanted to share what we do have, which is the actual data of which students have been invited by tier. Starting with the 7th grade, this slide shows the total number of invitations sent by exam school over the last five years. As you can see, the total number of invitations sent decreased slightly and is on par with the number sent in the 21-22 admission cycle. This decrease does not mean that the total number of seats at exam schools has declined. As you know, we anticipate a certain amount of attrition each year of students who do not accept their invitations. If there are open seats throughout the summer, my team will begin calling students off the waitlist. Our current policy distributes invitations by socioeconomic tier, with each tier getting the same number of invitations. Each year, if there are additional invitations for a tier that does not have enough applicants, additional seats are reallocated evenly to the other tiers. This slide shows the number of applicants in each tier, the number of invitations sent overall, and the number of invitations sent to each of the three exam schools. The two columns on the right-hand side show the percent of invitees by tier who received additional points. And the last column shows the number of points students in each tier received based on the school they attended in the previous year. This number of points is the policy shift the school committee approved in January. Finally, for 7th grade, this slide shows the minimum composite score by tier for each of the three exam schools and compares last year to this year. You'll remember from previous conversations that in last year's admission cycle, students in Tier 7 needed a composite score over 100 to receive an invitation to exam schools. With the policy adjustment, that minimum composite score has decreased in the 7th grade. As I mentioned at the beginning of this section of my report, this is only an initial look at data from this year's admission cycle. The team is conducting deeper analysis to better understand the impact of the policy change on different groups of students, and we'll share that analysis at a later date. These slides and the same information for 9th grade are all slides that are posted on the school committee's webpage at bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee. The Welcome Services team has completed the first round SY2425 demand report. Many families and school committee members have expressed interest in the data collected in this annual report. Families use this data to determine their chances of being called off the waitlist, seat availability, and to determine the number of families who receive their first choice. In an effort to be fully transparent with the results from each round, this report is usually uploaded to the website two weeks after the round assignments. The school demand report can be found on our website at bostonpublicschools.org/register. Last week, the Family Advancement Team, led by Chief Sanchez, offered acceleration academies at 28 BPS school sites around the city during school vacation week. In addition, 10 schools had school-funded programs. Students in grades 3 through 12 in need of additional academic support were identified by school leaders for this opportunity. Approximately 1,700 students participated in the district-funded April Acceleration Academies. Spring acceleration programming also includes two Saturday acceleration programs. English High School and Brighton High School will host Saturday Acceleration Academies April 27th and on May 4th, 11th, and 18th. Acceleration tutoring for an additional nine schools is taking place before and after school in April and May. The academic focus area for April was math. Lower schools used a combination of defined learning and imagined math curriculum. Many high schools used the approximately 20 hours of instructional time to help prepare students for the May MCAS testing. Visiting acceleration academies is always a lot of fun. There's a lot of joy, there's a lot of excitement. And I'd like to highlight Roxbury Ellis Elementary School under the leadership of school leaders Lam Ivy and Linda Cruz. As you can see in these pictures, Ellis students took great pride in working on their projects, which they presented to their peers and parents as part of the April Acceleration Academy End of Week Celebration. Ms. Cruz leads the April Acceleration Program, and she stops at nothing to ensure that she meets more than 95% attendance, including incentives, parent-and-student personalized phone calls, and ensuring the school is ready as soon as students arrive, as early as 7:00 AM. Acceleration programming included the participation of many newcomer students this year from the Melanie Cass Recreation Center. Thank you to the schools that made specific efforts to host our newcomers, the Ellis, the Trotta Elementary, the Higgins and Lewis K-8, and Trilstown High School. In addition, I'm very excited to share that the Expanded Learning Opportunities Team, led by Director Gillian Neskos, have secured a $2.2 million DESI grant, which supported the April Acceleration Academies last week and will support a summer component outside of the fifth-quarter programming. This grant is aligned to our district priorities of prioritizing and accelerating academic performance, strengthening access to social-emotional learning, increasing accountability for both central office and our schools. And later this evening, school committee members will have the opportunity to vote on this grant. Friday, April 12th, was the Red Sox Foundation's Annual Nessun Game Day at Fenway Park. The event recognized the Fenway Park Learning Lab Program and included a reception for students and teachers from the Mata Hunt Elementary School. The Learning Lab is an interactive learning experience available to all BPS 6th grade students. Fenway is their classroom and activities focus on statistics, history, science, and financial literacy, giving students insight into the many different areas within the park. Students experience historic Fenway Park in a new, fun way to learn together with their classmates. BPS was recognized during an on-the-field ceremony along with Red Sox Foundation staff, Mass Mutual representatives, which sponsored the game's broadcast, and other stakeholders. Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Community, and Family Advancement, Dr. Anna Tavares was there, and I was there. And it was pretty awesome to see how students really enjoyed being at Fenway and getting to be acknowledged by the Red Sox. It was especially thrilling to see Mata Hunt 6th grader and Dorchester resident, Alvin Soto Britto, who threw out the first pitch. I mean, it was spot on. It was literally spot on the plate, right in the strike zone. Bobby will appreciate that. And he just, he has a great arm. And it was, it was really just an awesome night for the kids and just memorable for all of us. Boston Public Schools' Community Engagement and Partnership Team hosted its inaugural Summer Resource Fair on Friday, April 12th in the historic Sportsman's Tennis and Enrichment Center in Dorchester. Approximately 220 parents, students, and school staff connected with 30 partner organizations and BPS departments. Organizations offered a variety of summer and community resources, including programs ranging from arts, athletics, faith-based, technology, and more. The event also provided partners an opportunity to collaborate with one another. The event was led by the Community Engagement Team in partnership with several other BPS departments, including Countdown to Kindergarten, Specialized Services, Hub Schools, and OME, or the Office of Multicultural and Multilingual Education. Interpreters were also present to ensure that all partners' programs' information was accessible to everyone in the community. Students and families were treated to food, free tennis lessons during the Volley Against Violence Program, a partnership between Sportsman's and the Boston Police Department. And BPS very much looks forward to hosting Summer Resource Fairs annually. Members of the Boston Student Advisory Council, or BSAC, are holding their End of the Year Showcase on Thursday, May 9th, from 4:00 to 6:30 here in the School Committee Room at the Bowling Building. There are 42 active BSAC members across 13 schools, including School Committee member Aron Diego Metta. BSAC provides a forum for student voice as well as opportunities for engagement and dialogue with the district. BSAC students have been working in groups on projects. Subcommittee topics include educational equity, mental health, anti-racism, and adultism. The students will also share their passion projects, which are independent projects focused on important issues that students want to bring attention to. I really look forward to hearing more about the projects. You can find registration information by searching for BSAC Buzz on Instagram or on the BPS website, bostonpublicschools.org/BSAC. It's a long report, sorry. In addition, representatives of the Division of Equity Strategy and Opportunity Gaps held an engagement session with BSAC members on April 4th here at the Bowling Building to discuss potential updates to our Opportunity Achievement Gap policy. Students gave great feedback and suggested changes based on their experience. We value BSAC's input and engagement as we always do with student voice. We appreciate opportunities like these where we hear directly from our students and saying thank you to everyone who participated as well as put on the event. The BPS Office of Specialized Services will be hosting its annual Autism Acceptance Celebration on Monday, April 29th, from 11:00 AM until 1:00 PM at the Bowling Building. We're thrilled to invite you to celebrate the spectrum of neurodiversity within our student community. BPS offers a wide array of student services for autistic students ranging from ages 3 to 22. Participants will explore activities aligned with these supports by visiting tables showcasing BPS and community services. Additionally, we will highlight the joy of our BPS students and recognize notable figures within the autistic community. Registration is not required. Interpreters will be available, and light refreshments will be served. Don't forget to grab your raffle ticket for the chance to win tickets to the zoo. We look forward to celebrating with you. In closing, the Boston Special Education Parent Advisory Council, or SPEDPAC, will be hosting a virtual presentation on summer learning for students with disabilities tomorrow, Thursday, April 25th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. SPEDPAC has invited us in partnership to present on both Extended School Year, which we call ESY, and Fifth Quarter at tomorrow's event. It'll be a great opportunity to connect directly with families in collaboration with SPEDPAC around summer opportunities for our students with disabilities. You can go to bostonpublicschools.org/ossnewsandevents for more information. Lots of information, lots of great things happening. That concludes my report, Chair.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. I will now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee.
Yeah.
I'll just make one quick comment. Superintendent, you talked about the, um, all the academies that happened last week during spring break. And it's, it's exciting to me. I happened to visit some schools this week that had them last week and to see the, the joy of the students who were there, as well as the teachers and school leaders who were in charge with it. Everyone thinks, oh, school vacation, everyone's gone for a week. And yet, most of our schools were just as busy as ever. And our students were learning. And so it was great to see. And I thank the school leaders and teachers who were involved in that effort, as well as the, the team that put them together.
Yeah, and particularly probably because we really have been thinking out of the box where the traditional acceleration academy works in certain schools. But other schools have asked to veer from it a little bit and be able to do before and after-school tutoring. And then at the high school level, it's been this idea of the learning Saturdays. So it's really, I think, been a great opportunity for us to, to really explore and use the data to sort of drive how we can support schools in the way that works best for them and for the kids they serve.
Great. Dr. Hawkins?
This is just a question, and I'm going back to the exam school invitations. Is there any way we can get a slide that compares the percentage of invitations from school year '23, '24? Not that, I know that we have the composite score, but I'm poring through, maybe I'm overlooking it, but I don't see the percent of invitees receiving points from, across years. That's what I wanted to say.
Sure. We definitely can do that. That's going to be part of the analysis the team's doing now. So we'll definitely do that in the update, and we'll make sure that there's some kind of a slide or visual.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question. I have a few. The, on the exam schools, if I'm reading this right, 976 invitations for 7th grade, 440 for 9th grade. I'm just curious, how many seats in total are there?
I might have to rely on Monica Hogan to answer the specifics on the exam school data.
And I guess while we're at it, and maybe this will be part of the larger analysis or even the conversation coming in a few weeks. There, last year, we were like shy of a few hundred seats for the schools. And as we're talking about choice and where people want to be and community voice and all of these things, it just seems like we'd end a lot. I say this all the time, but like we'd end a lot of these conversations and focus on the turnaround school, the transformation schools in a very different way if we just gave people the seats that they wanted. So I'm just curious, like, is that also in the mix? Like, where are we? That has been a conversation for the last two years I've been here, sort of always in the air but never landing, so.
Sure. So while Monica's looking it up, my recollection was like 400-seat differential from last year, but I could be wrong on that. I think the, the issue on the space side, right, relative to the buildings, is that they're all maxed out. I think the O'Brien proposal would have allowed us in the, you see the differential for them, particularly in the 7th and 8th grade. So it would have actually allowed us to expand about 400 seats. So in that way, it would have sort of come close to being able to do exactly what you say, sort of match the seatage. Monica?
So I don't have the target enrollment readily available, but we can get that for you. I can say that generally, the team tries to estimate based on expected attrition of how many people will accept and decline their invitations and adjust the numbers from there going forward. I think it was two years ago was the first year that we implemented the waitlist. And so in years prior to that, really tried to sort of over-invite a little bit more than with the waitlist can be a little bit more conservative with those over-invitations. And I will say, particularly in the 9th grade numbers, I think the, the number of invitations to BLS was considerably lower than last year, which has to do with the number of 8th graders that we expect to continue who are currently at BLS and move up into 9th grade. And so the 9th grade numbers fluctuate based on sort of how many students we expect to continue from the middle school grades. And at the O'Brien in particular, they actually take on additional classes of students in 9th grade, which is why there are more 9th grade invitations to the O'Brien and less 7th grade invitations to the O'Brien when you look at the three schools. So, but we can get you the target enrollment data. I just don't have it readily available.
Yeah, I think the other point to this is, in the, in the case of BLS and BLA, when we have a higher yield than what we predicted, we end up with class overages, and there's no way to really fix it. In order to give the kids what they need, you end up with, you know, 28, 29, 30 within a class, so.
I, I, sometimes I'm a broken record on this. I would love for these conversations to end. And I don't know, my son goes to a school with three campuses. So like, I'm just, I feel like we're, it's like we're a smart group of people that could solve a problem. I feel like actually, in like a, the effort of community engagement, I feel like if you told families the first grade, 7th grade was at a satellite site, but it means you got a seat, like, people would buy into this. And we give people what they want. And I just feel like we're just not, we're not doing it. So I hope, maybe it's next year, but I just like hope we keep it alive. Because then I think it goes back to the demand data. I would be curious, just across the districts, what, what we're seeing, what we're noticing, what schools are showing low preference? Just sort of like, what are the findings that we're seeing on the demand side?
Yes, I think on the demand, we literally just created the report. It comes out usually two to three weeks after the first round ends. So the team's digging into the analysis. Happy to report on that in a memo form and discuss at the next school committee, but we haven't done that deep yet.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful. I think it's helpful as we go into merger consolidation conversations in a few weeks, because some of that should be informed, I imagine, would be informed by that. And then I think it begs this question, like, we know these schools have high demand. So like, I think there's always a question of like, how do you, in a choice system, like, how do you meet the demand? If there are schools that people are dying to go to, do you grow the school? And schools that people are not dying to go to, what do you do with it? So I hope that can be part of the conversation, but also how we're thinking about what's coming in terms of the broader infrastructure for the system.
Yeah, that, that's great. And I, I think that that's something, you know, we do intend to have a working group to start to kind of look at the data and dig into it more. And so factor into like, that potentially as a recommendation, what that could look like. So we can definitely do that. I also think, like, the point's well taken of thinking about the high-quality student experience and where that's already happening and how to expand those seats. And so I think in, like, the proposal with the MK, we see that. Certainly, the Quincy Upper, as it opens its new building doors next fall, we will see that there. So I do think that we're meeting it within that strategy. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Ms. Hogan.
And Superintendent, you know, I have said many times the same thing that Mr. Carter and Ennis said about wishing that there were an opportunity to give each of the exam schools a junior and a senior campus, because it is heartbreaking year after year to see kids who have the qualifications and the desire to go to a school or schools that they cannot go to when we have other schools that we know are struggling. And the goal is to move all of our students into high-performing seats and to keep those students who have the skill set and the desire to be here and to improve all seats. So just hoping that that really becomes our long-term strategy.
Right. So thank you, Chair. And I definitely, point well taken. The one piece of data I would just ask committee to mull on, like, until the 22nd, is that across the exam schools, the combined service of special education students is 4%. And the combined service is 4% for multilingual learners. That is well, well, well below the district average. So again, if we were to expand additional exam seats, we further dilute and concentrate special education and MLE students into the other high schools. So it has to be a multiple-pronged approach where we're also working to think about how do we help to increase access for special education students and multilingual learners to the exam school seats. And that could be through additional preparation. That could be potentially, you know, relative to the admissions policy. That could be the support that we give to special education MLE students once on campus. But I think we have to think about it kind of not just the expansion of seats, but also how do we make sure that we're enabling all high-quality seats to be accessible to all students?
Can I just, I, I'm with you. And I, there are models of other places that have done just that. And I think your point is taken with even like a point system, right? Like, we saw the special education reform in New York. who figured out with their specialized schools how to meet the citywide average on who was able to attend by increasing access through a point system. So I'm, yeah, I want that. I want that for all of our schools. I think you, the, we have to think about that in the entire admissions process.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you all, and I will now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the superintendent's report is approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matter are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. The meeting will feature two public comment peers with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up for virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who hasn't testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have eleven speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and I would remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than three minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you're from before you begin. We will begin this evening with our in-person speakers. Our first speakers are Deirdre Manning, Robert Jenkins, followed by Anshin Shilla DeGeorge. Deirdre Manning? Robert Jenkins?
I don't work here, but. Good evening, good evening, good evening, Superintendent. Good evening, Chair Robinson, good evening, school committee members. My name is Robert Jenkins, president of the Madison Park Alumni Association. I'm talking about Madison, it's the M theme today. Madison Park and the Matter Hunt Community Center in collaboration with the Matter Hunt School, Elementary School. I'll see you tomorrow morning, Superintendent, at the grand reopening of the Matter Hunt, Matter Hunt Community Center, four years renovation. So it's this beautiful facility, if you haven't been there, I would invite you to go. But real quick, I'm here to talk about, with the theme of partnerships, community partnerships, and BPS partnerships. I'm working very closely with a number of BPS offices, but the ELO office is a fantastic office. I volunteered some time in the past on getting out flyers, getting the word out for the accelerated programs, whether during the summer or during the vacation. Last week, Madison Park students were one of the high schools under math. It's a lot of good things going on. We, the Madison Park Alumni Association, have filed for two grants. The Mayor's Sports Grant to help Cory, Cory McCarthy, with a summer learning program that will be for freshmen and sophomores on not only athletics, but most importantly academics. Getting these students, he started that work right now and we're working with him as well. But the ELO office, I've been hearing rumblings that, you know, BPS was going to close it. I told people out there, I don't know where you heard that from, that would never happen. Because if it did, I would be the first one hitting the streets and having people come up to these meetings for that not to happen. That is a valuable program. You know, again, I was at, I was at the Sportsman's Tennis Club two weeks ago, when the engagement office was there. That was a great event. The Sportsman's is a jewel, to see over two hundred and twenty students there and families with over thirty-plus community-based organizations. As you know, I've testified many a times, you know, you know, Mike knows, I mean, Mr. O'Neil knows. I've told him that it's a delight, left hand and right hand, they worked it together. We don't have nothing. See you tomorrow, Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Deirdre Manning?
Good evening, my name is Deirdre Manning. I am a single parent of two minor children who live in Dorchester. One is a BPS student, one used to be a BPS student until the situation at the Henderson got so bad that when we got a seat at a public charter school, we had to take it, leaving behind a community that we loved and students who don't have other choices. I am so upset that for another year, BPS is continuing with a policy that is excluding children from what they consider to be nicer neighborhoods. They are also double penalizing children in those nicer neighborhoods who do not receive these so-called bonus points that virtually everybody gets. I'd like to point out to committee members a picture of a tier-seven home. This is an apartment over a liquor store. The family that lives there has two BPS students. One is a seventh grader at Boston Latin. The other one is a girl who despite having a higher raw composite score, did not get a seat at Boston Latin. Same family, same neighborhood, not a very nice neighborhood. But this home right here is considered to be on par with a brownstone on Beacon Street in the Back Bay. It is ridiculous. It should not happen that people who live in not-so-nice places get caught up in a flawed policy. The American Community Survey is used in between-decade census data, which is going to a hundred percent of the people. Two-point-five percent of the people respond to the American Community Census. That means in a neighborhood of two hundred people, five people dictate what happens with the neighborhood. In this particular situation, this home flipped from a six to a seven. And that was enough to deprive a young girl of an opportunity at Boston Latin School. It is ludicrous. I don't understand with all of the parents who have come before the school committee to tell them about all of the many problems, including practices that put non-BPS students, even poor kids who go to public charter schools, at a disadvantage.
Thirty seconds.
I don't understand why this continues. You've been given plenty of information, but yet this exclusionary policy persists. It is wrong. Public school is supposed to open doors for all children, not specifically exclude children who live in tiers seven and eight neighborhoods. Some of them could be on Section Eight housing. They also get kicked to the curb. What is wrong with Boston Public Schools that they are continuing?
Thank you.
With this practice?
Thank you, Ms. Manning.
It shouldn't continue.
Next speaker is Ms. S.
Please fix it.
Hi, my name is Anshin Shilla DeGeorge. I'm a Roxbury resident and the parent of an eighth grader at BLA. Last year, you implemented a new and improved helpline for BPS. Most parents never heard of it. I don't think it was very well advertised, but those who did have been fully impressed and amazed at its effectiveness and pleasantly surprised to learn that a former BPS parent advocate was actually running it. So not only managing it, but was the main architect of it. So looking at it through parents' eyes as well as professionally. I mentioned to you, Superintendent Skipper, when we first met, how excited I was about that and that it really gave me hope that having someone like her running the helpline was genuinely an effort to make improvements in BPS and that you were going to lead this district with the genuine intentions to improve it. Because leadership matters at both the district level and the department level. You have also mentioned the success of this department being a bright spot in BPS, and we all agree. It also met the requirement that Desi put on BPS to receive, to avoid state receivership. So it really appears to be a win-win for everyone, right? It really is working for families as well. But families having someone like Angie Camacho to contact meant that we would actually be getting honest and accurate information to address our concerns. This is not the norm in BPS, and I suspected it wasn't going to last long. However, I was shocked that she was there all of last year and this year until now. She is scheduled to leave BPS on Tuesday. I can't imagine this person who has so much history and institutional knowledge is being let go. In fact, I keep saying, if I were Mary Skipper, I'd be putting her right next to me. But this seems to be what's happening so far. I know there are maybe efforts to keep her, but it's not even about her. It's the entire help desk. And she is the help desk and she's training people and she has this incredible amount of knowledge that the departments we go to don't even have the answers they can ask her. Like, she just knows where we should be going. So it makes no sense that she's being somehow, appears to be punished. I know that the job is being reassessed and posted again. There's a minor change in it, certainly not one that she needed to be let go for. But I, I think most importantly is that we don't let this period lapse between filling that role, hopefully with her, thank you, hopefully with her, because it will absolutely hurt families who are already in turmoil if she does leave. You can choose to prevent that. It makes no sense. I can't imagine she has been so impressive in what she's done. So I guess, I guess the ask is to please hold on to her, at least in the interim, until you finalize that position, again, hopefully with her. But if not, just don't let the lapse happen. She's an incredible amount of knowledge there, thank you, for families.
We will now transition to virtual testimonies. Please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment and be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. So our next group of speakers is going to be Counselor Julia Mejia, Freddie Herman, Genesis Sanchez, and Mike Heishman. Counselor Mejia?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me this evening. I am Counselor at Large Julia Mejia, a BPS advocate, so that I created my own nonprofit organization called C-Plan, the Collaborative Parent Leadership Action Network, with the goal of making sure that parents have a voice in all the decision-making processes. The reason why I'm here tonight is because I recently learned about the position that right now Angie Camacho is overseeing and I, and I'm here to listen and to learn. I'm a little bit confused as to why this position is being dissolved. And I'm just curious, especially because a lot of the calls that we get in our office are from parents who are trying to navigate the educational system and oftentimes have no other recourse but to call the help center, but to call the help center to help support them in their process. So what I'm curious about is, one, is it true that the position's going to be resolved, dissolved? And two, if it's the one lifeline for so many parents who are getting directed to the right departments or the best way for them to actually be able to advocate for their students' needs, I'm just curious as to why this position is being dissolved. And there's been a lot of efforts that have been made to restore trust and I'm just concerned about how this potentially might break the trust with, which is already flawed among parents here in the Boston Public School system. So I'm here to question why and advocate for us to really have a transparent process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Freddie Herman.
Hi, my name is Freddie Herman. I attend Fender High School as a senior and I'm wrapping up my BPS journey and I will be heading to Tufts University next year. And the main reason I wanted to speak today was to share how I was able to get there and that's because of Academy Dorchester. While at Academy Dorchester, I learned a lot about hard work and perseverance that has really helped me as a Fender student while, and like by what teachers I was given and the work that they gave me. And I know that that work and those teachers and the lessons I've learned will help me when I make it into Tufts University. So I just want to thank BPS for partnering with you, up Academy Dorchester, to allow me those experiences and let me excel and succeed in this huge field of education. As a first-generation student, I wouldn't have been able to know by myself. So thank you for your time and thank you, BPS.
Thank you. Next speaker is Genesis Sanchez, who will need a Spanish interpreter. Genesis?
Genesis, está escuchando, ya puede hablar.
Sí, ya puedo hablar. Hola, mi nombre es Genesis Sanchez. Y este, yo el año pasado tuve un año muy difícil porque me quedé sin hogar y pues, este, mis niños y yo estábamos sin hogar, entonces nos fuimos a un shelter y nos mandaron lejos, nos mandaron lejos, pero gracias al apoyo de los maestros y de toda la escuela que me ayudó.
Un momento, Genesis, para que le pueda interpretar.
Sí, okay.
Good evening, my name is Genesis Sanchez. I did have a very difficult last year, I have to consider that I became homeless. And it was very difficult after that. And then I had to go to a shelter.
Sí, entonces, este, mis niños y yo nos mandaron para un sitio muy lejos de Boston, pero gracias a los profesores y a todo lo que trabajan en la UPA Academy, me ayudaron a conseguir transporte y a mis hijos le va bastante bien.
Have to say as well that I had to go, I wasn't to a place that was far away. I do have to emphasize as well that in the process, the teachers and the people from the UPA Academy were very supportive. Thank to them, and my kids are doing pretty well.
Sí, estoy muy agradecida por todo el apoyo que recibió también de, del transporte que me los, me los, me ayudan a yo poder enviarlos diario y que ellos puedan seguir progresando cada día.
I'm very grateful. I'm very grateful, particularly when the transportation was provided. It allows them to go to school and come back. And that has been very beneficial for them to do well at school. And that is it.
Gracias, Genesis. Thank you. So next speaker is Mike Heishman.
Mike Heishman, Beja, Dorchester. The BPS strategic vision begins with, at BPS, every child in every classroom is entitled to an equitable, world-class, high-quality education. It's a beautiful vision and I'm always happy to do my small part to support its implementation. Once again, we are being sued. Once again, the issue is the exam school admission policy. Once again, the complaint is that too many of our black and brown children have the opportunity to be accepted into three of our elite schools. I wonder if any of these parents support the BPS strategic vision. I wonder if any of these parents care about the vast majority of our children who attends inadequate and under-resourced facilities. We would be a much stronger school system if only more of these privileged parents would join the fight and support of excellence for all. Unfortunately, they don't. They fight for their children's entitlement to receive an elite education. They don't care for other people's children. What should be done? I endorse Chair Robinson's call for admission by lottery. No more unfair and discriminatory exam requirements. You want to attend? You want to attend, you have the right for your application to have the same chance as anyone else. Additionally, change the names of BLS and BLA. The BLS would become the Boston Elite School. Let's be honest, my children don't want to attend BLS because they are dying to study a dead language for many years. They want to be seen as a member of the best and brightest. BLA would become the Boston Social Justice Academy. Latin would be an elective. Students would be encouraged to develop a high level of fluency in a second language. Community service would be a requirement. I'm often inspired by those who speak during public testimony. At our last meeting, a high school senior spoke, I believe from the Snowden. She will be denied her diploma for one reason. She had refused to take the MCAS test. I'm speculating her reasons. She believes that the test is unfair and has played a harmful role in her school community. She testified to complain how her school has punished her for her courageous and heroic choice. She is an example of what a BPS graduate should look like. An educated, compassionate and courageous person. She deserves to be treated with love and respect by her school community. I request that Superintendent Skipper intervene to make sure that this happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Edith Brazil, followed by Kathleen Chardevoyne, Suleika Soto and Betsy Yoshimura. Edith Brazil.
Thank you so much. Last month, I testified about how BPS has dismantled racial equity initiatives. Did you know that BPS is now eliminating the entire expanded learning opportunities team, cutting all primarily Black and Latino professionals? Some other positions mentioned in family and community advancement will end on either April 30th and others by June 2024. The entire Office of Extended Learning Opportunities provides before and after-school programs and extended learning opportunities to schools, particularly transformation schools. Family and community advancement staff welcome families and function as cultural brokers using the lens of racial and cultural equity and evidence-based practices to build schools' capacity to meet the needs of racially, linguistically, culturally diverse families through extended learning. BPS cannot create strong, healthy, inclusive school cultures without district leaders who possess cultural capital and use the best family enhancement and build strategies to community resources, collaborating with external partners, state agencies, extended learning and summer learning opportunities, help families navigate an ever-changing district through innovation and capacity building. Karen Mapp, who led community engagement in BPS for many years, said, quote, "If we listen deeply to families, we can then identify ways to revise our system-level support to strengthen our pursuit of equitable student outcomes," end of quote. Her research includes that strong family and community advancement leads to increase, increase student attendance, higher grades and improved student outcomes. While the district has the discretionary authority to reorganize, it must ensure it does not result in collateral damage to students accessing robust learning opportunities, closing gaps, building inclusion and strengthening a sense of belongingness. Meanwhile, there are no cuts to safety services to BPS and BPS invests $30 million in metal detectors and cameras. What does that say about our priorities? Madam Chair, as we quickly approach summer, this should raise questions from this committee. What is the plan for rolling out expanded learning and summer learning opportunities? Given these cuts, will BPS share its rationale and plan for moving forward with families and community this summer? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kathleen Chardevoyne.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Chardevoyne, I'm a BPS parent from Charlestown. I appreciate the timely sharing of data on admissions and minimum scores by tier. Oh, I'm here to speak about the exam school admissions policy. Parents had actually been doing this analysis themselves, anticipating a long wait from BPS, but it's a great step forward on transparency to have this data from BPS so early. That was a very pleasant surprise. But what is neither pleasant nor a surprise is the alarming differences in terms of the admission rates and the minimum scores across tiers. In terms of admission rate, in a year where 72% of all seventh grade applicants were admitted to an exam school, less than half of the applicants in Tier Eight were admitted, just 46%. And just 62% of applicants in Tier Six and Seven. Contrast these rates to tiers one through four, where 86% to 100% of applicants won seats. In terms of minimum scores, an applicant in Tier Eight needed a 96.5 for any exam school seat. That is an alarming contrast to tiers one through five, where applicants with scores in 60s and 70s were admitted. From the data that parents did collect, it's clear that the excluded applicants, almost all of whom were earning scores in the 90s, live in geographically diverse neighborhoods, including Roselandale, Southie, Dorchester, JP, Charlestown, Bay Village and West Roxbury. They come from socio-economically diverse households, many renters, single parents, recent immigrants. They attend diverse schools, including schools that qualify for bonus points, the Haley Pilot, the Bates, the Oren Burger, the Quincy and the Murphy. These applicants are excluded for one reason. Their census tract was assigned to a tier that has far more applicants than seats. BPS now has three years of data demonstrating unequivocally that the equal allocation of seats to tiers results in vastly different outcomes for applicants. Outcomes that are not a result of the applicant's qualifications, their neighborhood, the quality of their school or their socioeconomic status, but a result of the arbitrary assignment of their census tract to a tier. This is not an anomaly. It's a trend. It's repeated itself every year that applicants have been forced to compete in their assigned tier for a fixed number of seats. Please fix the math and allocate these tiers based on the number of applicants. Thank you.
Next speaker is Suleika Soto.
One second. Good evening, my name is Suleika Soto. I have two daughters that attend Tech Boston Academy and I live in the South End. I want to thank the school teachers, principal and district for the prompt multi-channel communication today regarding the incident at the school and I'm wishing the student a speedy recovery and hoping both students and families receive the support and restorative justice they deserve. I am here today though as the financial chair of the Citywide Parent Council and I am speaking on behalf of the Citywide Parent Council with my colleague Betsy. The CPC, or Citywide Parent Council, is a vital organization that has been serving the Boston Public Schools for nearly 50 years. We are here to ensure that all students receive a quality education and that parents are engaged with an authentic and faithful manner at the classroom, school and district levels. Judge Arthur Garrity recognized the importance of the Citywide Parent Council when he mandated the establishment of the parent group in 1974. He outlined that our function is to ensure impartial investigation and responsible recommendations on racially and ethnically oriented problems arising at the classroom, school and district levels to ensure equitable, high-quality education for all students. Furthermore, we create a means of collaborative communication between parents, students, teachers and administrators regarding solutions to such problems. Our goal is to promote an environment of understanding and common purpose among the various elements of the community so that high-quality, equitable education is offered to all children. We are here today as representatives of all parent councils to demand that the district includes us in decision-making processes that impact family engagement. We believe that our essential role and function should be recognized and we should be involved in discussions such as the upcoming reorganization of the Family Engagement Office. We have already communicated our needs and concerns to the district, including through a year of work with Denise Snyder that was not continued with Magali Sanchez and through a list of recommendations to the superintendent to improve family engagement. We demand that the department's reorganization addresses them. We also require that you inform us about any department restructuring affecting equity. We ask that the CPC, as Judge Garrity mandated, be at the table regarding any reorganizing, hiring and decision-making processes that affects families and equity, including the hotline. We need Magali from the Family Engagement Office to meet with us immediately to explain the changes and discuss the concerns and recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Betsy Yoshimura.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so very much for allowing us to speak this evening. I am Betsy Yoshimura and mother to two daughters at the Mario Umana Dual Language Academy in East Boston. I am an active member of my school's family and school site councils and I have also served on the CPC as communications co-chair for about the past year. I don't know, it's felt like five years, but it's probably only one year so far. And allow me to continue from where my colleague Ms. Soto left off. We believe that families should be engaged in how Title I funds are being spent at all levels, from the programs they want to see to how they want to be engaged with using the 1% minimum, the minimum of 1% allocations for family engagement the Title I requires at the school level. Despite the department being allocated $43 million, many families have not been consulted with on the best way to spend those funds. We remain concerned about transparent communication with families and misrepresentations at the district level of family engagement that go beyond the checking of a box. As a timely example of these concerns, you will hear today that multilingual and multi-channel weekly communications to families began on March 25th. However, families have not yet received information about fifth quarter or summer learning. We urgently require the implementation of robocalls to inform all families about our, the CPC meetings as it is a vital channel for parent engagement. The absence of this tool has caused a short months delay in our elections due to the inability to achieve a quorum, which is 25% of all selected CPC schools that have CPC representatives. Okay, our goal is to promote an environment of understanding and common purpose among various elements of the community so that high-quality, equitable education is offered to all children. We are here today, oh wait, sorry. Okay. Sorry about that. This inequity, this inequity extends beyond our organization to affect other parents. Equitable communication channels must be established to ensure all voices are heard. We urge you to hear our voices. What?
Your time is up. Could you please send testimony?
Yeah, sure, sorry.
Thank you. That concludes public testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Well, now move on to action items. Our first action item this evening is the Grants for Approval totaling $5,652,972. Now I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent for any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. No, I think the grant that I will comment on is the Acceleration Academies. I think you got to see in action the work and, you know, how we spend it. You also see that there's one there to support our electric buses. Excuse me, there's one that, there's a renewable one that we get from the Department of Education to support our Afghan refugee grant, Afghan refugees. And then there's also a Perkins on there and that's generally to support like new equipment in any of the material goods that are needed for programming relative to Chapter 74.
Thank you. And now open it up to questions and comments from the committee.
Dr. Alkins?
So I have a question just related to the, the reduction, I forget, DERA, I'm sorry, grant. That is for the implementation of electric buses. I just have a question also around the, how that shifts any certifications or things like that, that drivers are going to have to secure to be able to do that. And I know that's covered under the grant, but.
And would you, or Jackie, would you like to answer that?
Just to make sure, I heard that question was about certifications for drivers.
Yes, just like, how does that change since we're trying to overhaul the entirety of the bus system like for that?
Yeah, so the buses are, no additional certifications or anything are needed. The buses are largely the same and there's some, some additional training that drivers get when they pick a route that has an electric school bus. Okay. But it's relatively quick, you know, can be completed in a day.
And so how long will we see, I guess, until we're fully implemented?
We have a very ambitious goal of fully electrifying the fleet by 2030. We're aggressively pursuing kind of every funding opportunity that's out there to, to help us get to that point. So we have, we have 20 on the road right now, 19 more coming this summer and then you kind of, this grant and, you know, hopefully more to come soon will help us rapidly expand from there. But it's an ambitious goal at this point.
All goes to be ambitious. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I'm, well, sorry. And so the, the Acceleration Academies grant, which is largely math-focused, is there a plan to also then roll out grants that are either for more science-like focus as well? And we, we had the presentation last week around, last session around equitable literacy and.
Right, so it's a great question. So there's two rounds of the grants. One comes for the February and that's for English Language Arts. And then the other is the math, which will come in April. We do a lot more over the summer relative to science enrichment or science programming. Right now, Desi doesn't offer the grants for Acceleration Academy for either science or history.
Interesting.
Just one point of clarification too. The Bakersfield Acceleration Academies, this grant is just for transformation schools. They're just at transformation.
Correct. We spend more money than this to do year-long acceleration between February and April. So this one here is just covering transformation, but we covered the February ones. And that, you know, again represents 30, I think it's 38 schools.
Thank you all. If there's no further discussion, and now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any discussion or objection to them?
Yeah. No, I just had, I had a question. I think either I'm reading this incorrectly or this might be a typo. Hold up, hold up, I thought I had it. The so are we saying the award amount is $2 billion over a period of time?
For the vacation, $2 million over the vacation.
$2.2, okay, in case I'm.
The academy one?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out which page we're looking on. Page five, five, right? Am I reading that number wrong?
Yeah, agenda's $2 million.
I'm, yeah, in the grant package.
It's $2.2 billion.
It says $2.2 billion, so I'm just, I'm just like, like ones, tens, hundreds. I just want to make sure.
Oh, I see. It's on the acceptance. We would be saluting Yvonne if that were the case, right, Yvonne? To have you up here would be like, so yeah, so it is, that is a typo.
So that's a typo. All right.
So it's.
Got me excited.
No, I saw that. I was just like, wait a second.
We're okay here?
All right, just making sure we all understand.
All right, we're good. That was a good catch. It's too bad it wasn't what we wished it was. All right, so I'll start again. Just in case. All right, and now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Our section, our second action item for tonight is the in-kind donation. The total of estimated value $1,318. I'd now like to turn it over to the interims. Oh, sorry, let's say interims, to the superintendent.
Did my title change, Chair? No one told me.
I'm reading that. Sorry about that. To the superintendent.
I mean, this is just, it's a wonderful grant. Porter Square Books is one that contributes to us regularly, and this allows us to be able to give books away.
Thank you.
Love it.
And now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. There's nothing further. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the in-kind donation as presented. Is there a motion?
Some vote.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion?
Just to thank you to Porter Square Books.
Yes, absolutely. Is there any objection to approving the in-kind donations by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the in-kind donations are approved. Thank you. We'll move right into our main report, the Summer Learning Update. I will now invite the Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Community, and Family Advancer, Advancement, Dr. Anna Tavarez, and Chief Family Advancement Officer Magali Sanchez to please step forward with the presentation. While they are getting settled, I'd like to invite the Superintendent to give opening remarks.
Wonderful. So I'm excited to share that BPS has been busy diligently planning for the summer of 2024 over the past few months. It's actually longer than the past few months. It goes all the way back to the fall, actually. Tonight, my team's here to update you on the district plans on several fronts. The fifth quarter, extended school year or ESY, summer jobs, the Exam School Initiative, and student support programming. Our goal always is to build on the successes of last year to bring even more resources to our students and to our families as early as possible. We're focusing on quality programming versus the quantity of programming. Led by Deputy Superintendent Dr. Anna Tavarez and teams from, as you'll see, the Office of Family and Community Advancement, Specialized Services, Academics, and Multilingual and Multicultural Education. These guys are all collaborating on our goal to increase the overall participation of BPS students, but especially our multilingual learners and students receiving special education services across programs. During the summer of 2023, BPS served approximately 10,000 students. As we continue to prepare for the upcoming summer months, we expect to have the capacity to serve more than 20,000 students, which includes job opportunities. Shortly, you'll hear from Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Community, and Family Advancement, Dr. Anna Tavarez, and Chief Family Advancement Officer Magali Sanchez. And so I'll now turn it over proudly to Dr. Tavarez and the team.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you for your steadfast leadership and support of summer learning opportunities for our students. Good evening, Madam Chair and School Committee members. We are so excited to finally take a break from planning summer and actually share our summer learning plan for our students and families with all of you this evening. The excitement never gets old for me. As a former teacher and principal, I loved watching students thrive in the summer through project-based learning opportunities and through exploring Boston. We look forward to your questions. This is one of many conversations to share summer learning. First and foremost, we ground our work in equity and work toward closing opportunity gaps by centering historically and systemically marginalized students in our work and providing opportunities where their ethnicity, language, culture, region of origin, and ability status, among others, are seen as assets to their learning. With the support of the Office of Equity and the Office of Opportunity Gaps, this work begins in collaboration. Our task this evening is to share an overview of the programmatic offerings available to our students informed by evidence-based decision-making and important lessons learned from last summer. As I already mentioned, much of this work is done in collaboration with colleagues from across divisions and departments. Before you is a representation of this cross-collaboration. This is part of the team that makes summer happen. Sitting beside me are leaders from the Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education, Special Education, and Student Support. Summer truly takes a village. We are also excited to share the diversity of programming. And to the superintendent's charge, we are focusing on quality of programming versus quantity of programming. And my colleagues joining me this evening will provide more details. And now I pass it to Chief Sanchez.
Thank you, Dr. Tavarez. Good evening, Madam Chair Robinson, Superintendent Skipper, and members of the School Committee. I'd like to start us off with a brief overview of 2023. As we can see, last summer, we had an overall capacity of a little over 20,000 summer opportunities for our BPS students. This year, we are happy to share that for summer 2024, there is an increase in programming of approximately 5,000 seats. What is critical to share, as Dr. Tavarez mentioned, is that we have focused our 2024 BPS Summer Programming Learning Portfolio on the quality of our programming, increasing both academic and enrichment opportunities for our high-needs student population in every grade and with special attention to programming and placement priorities, as we will see in future slides. Now I'd like to pass it to Dr. Tavarez, as she will initiate the review of our summer opportunities for 2024.
As previously mentioned by Chief Sanchez, we are being meticulous about what, where, and how we must improve program offerings for this summer. I have heard many of you say, "Our families vote with their feet." Meaning, they let us know what works for them and what does not by where they choose to send their students. And we observed some trends that influenced our decisions. And now I pass it for, to Chief Sanchez.
Thank you, Dr. Tavarez. Next slide, please. Right on to ESY. ESI, thank you. This year, under the leadership of Dr. Josman Gay, who's with us tonight, we are bringing back the Exam School Initiative, known as the ESI Program, which supports the expansion of access for our Black, Latinx, multilingual learners and other students from historically marginalized backgrounds to the district's three exam schools. This year's program includes targeted ELA and math instruction, map, test preparation, and hands-on project-based learning in STEAM and the arts. Next slide. We are also excited to share Future Boss. Thank you. Oh, sorry about that.
We wanted to make sure you all were not asleep, so.
There we are. Thank you so much, Megan. We're also excited to share that with Mayor Wu's Future Boss Initiative and commitment to our BPS students, she is guaranteeing a summer job for every student that meets the qualifications outlined on this slide. With the goal of increasing the number of BPS students placed in summer jobs from 5,000 last year to 10,000 for summer 2024. As part of our outreach, we are collaborating with school-based PIC career specialists and school counselors to disseminate these opportunities and ensure that as many students as possible have access to these opportunities. And now I will pass it to Chief Seal as she will walk us through our extended school year programming.
Good evening. Good evening, School Committee Chair, School Committee Members, and also Superintendent of Schools and our families who are watching tonight. My name is Kay Seal, and I'm the Chief of Specialized Services, representing the Office of Specialized Services. I will be leading this work with Dr. Lauren Viviani, Deputy Chief of Specialized Services, and Alicia Scott, who is our new Director of Extended School Year and Expanded Learning. That is an exciting position for us, and we're looking forward to partnering with our, my colleagues with Fifth Quarter and also with our schools. Extended School Year Services for specialized students here in our district is mandated by federal and state regulations and is recommended by IEP teams for students with disabilities. Unlike some of our community-based program services, they are required. It's a required service. Why must BPS provide these services for students with disabilities? The why. These targeted services are individualized and is a result of recommendations of our schools' IEP teams to ensure that students receive specially-designed instruction to minimize substantial regression recruitment of skills taught throughout the school year. Tonight, you will see current data that have identified our teams have found 4,648 students with abilities who are eligible for extended school year services. And these students are from grades K-0 to grade 12. This includes our community partnerships of post-secondary services for our students who are ages 18 to 22. Throughout the five weeks of our ESY program, our site coordinators, our teachers, our specialists, our clinicians, and our support staff will maintain data and monitor student progress based on IEP goals and objectives. So our IEPs identify the services that our students should be receiving through our extended school year services. When you look at this enrollment data, I want to celebrate. We have had almost 300, over 500 families moving into Boston Public Schools that are families with students with disabilities, and that's a huge accomplishment for us because of what we do for our students and our families here in Boston Public Schools. So with that, when we look at this eligibility data, it's important for also for us to understand that our data has also increased. We started off with, I want to say, under 10,000 to 11,000 students with disabilities across the district, and as of April, we have 11,300 students with disabilities in our district. Our registration responses reflect that we have also received from our families to date, over 1,010 registrations from our families saying that they will be attending our summer programs, and that's awesome. We're starting early this year, and hopefully that it's going to make an impact and a difference for us. It is also important for families who are watching tonight, who have children who are eligible for these services, please complete your registration forms because the most critical thing that families need to understand this evening is that to ensure that transportation begins for our students, our program starts on July 8th. There's a huge time factor for us to make sure that we receive your transportation forms and your registration forms so that we can ensure that your child who has transportation services on his or her IEP, that we can coordinate those services. However, some of our families did decide to opt out. And some of our families are only deciding to send their child who are coming in for related services only. Again, student attendance during ESY is very important. So families, as you plan your summer vacations, our ESY program will begin again on July 8th, and it will end on August 9th. We know that our students are looking forward to an exciting summer, and our goal is to provide various activities to accelerate their learning through the achievement of their IEP goals and objectives. When you look at this slide in terms of service delivery options, we wanted to make sure that we focus on our, what we have to do through the IEP process, and that includes specially-designed instruction for students who are receiving academics, social skills, behavioral counseling, and also related services, speech, OT, and also physical therapy services as needed, as outlining their IEPs. We also have various vocational services, and through the leadership of Marsha Fitzpatrick at the Thrive Summer Program, we will service our students and vocational opportunities from 18 to 22. Now, these are our students who have achieved a certificate of attainment. Some of our students may have also earned a high school diploma, but their IEP extends their learning. And these are our students who are in school until their 22nd birthday. That decision is made through the team process. So some of our vocational offerings, and some of our offerings are unpaid for some of our students, are such as there's facilities, there's carpentry, there's graphic design, there's business tech, and there's also automotive detailing, and that is a five-to-six-week program. In addition to that, we also have paid internships for some of our students. And that is a six-week program, and it's one vocational area for six weeks. And our students have an option to work at City Hall doing clerical tasks, also Wentworth Institute. They have auto detailing as well as culinary arts, as well as carpentry and horticulture. So we are beyond excited this summer to partner with my colleagues here from Fifth Quarter and to provide a variety of learning opportunities for our students and our families. And with that, I'd like to pass it on to my colleague, Corey McCarthy. Chief Corey McCarthy.
Thank you, Chief Seal. Get comfortable here. Hello, Chair Robinson, and the distinguished members of the School Committee. My name is Corey McCarthy, and I am the Chief of Student Support. Our division, like many of my colleagues who lead their divisions, are committed to ensuring our students have the best summer ever. Given the construct of our division, we are fortunate to engage with our young people on a daily basis. It is a privilege to plan, design, and serve our young people and their families. I am extremely proud of the efforts of our summer learning team as well as the outstanding members of our division who has helped curate a buffet of offerings and opportunities for our young people, which will include what we call five vehicles of success, which we believe will power our young people towards the best summer ever. I hope you're seeing the theme of best summer ever. Vehicle one, athletics. We have, we will have numerous camps that will focus on not just athletics, but the entire sports ecosystem, and we are very proud of our first sports leadership and sports management program this summer. We'll be partnering with a higher education, university, and college. Complementing these offerings will be an all-girls sports camp, preseason sports combine. preseason sports combines, and we will be entering our second year of esports. We know the kids love gaming. Vehicle two, special programming. We will offer unique programming such as hair braiding bootcamps, empowerment summits, a college readiness conference where we will support the academic and psychological safety of our first-generation college students and our first-year students. Finally, we will continue with our 617 Sunday program, which has taken on a life of itself in the community. Excited. Slide, please. Thank you. You're good. We're good. Vehicle three, mentoring. Our mentoring advisory in collaboration with the mayor's office is called Reach 1000. REACH is an acronym for Relationships Empower and Affirm Community Healing. Coming out of the pandemic, we realized the students needed more on top of more when it comes to mentoring and the psychological support and safety. This summer, we will continue with our college-going and workforce development efforts while offering additional pop-up initiatives that will address the greatest needs of our students identif, as identified by our students. Vehicle four, education. We are taking an innovative appro, innovative approach, and some of our offerings will include a collaboration with the Boston Design Academy, where students can make fitbits for the elderly and use technology to grow their own food. We will offer our widely-popular Comic-Con program, where we will use the Marvel Universe to motivate students to not only read, but engage deeply in text with the hope that they attain a deeper understanding of character development. This effort also culminates with a capstone. Vehicle five, mental health. We are grateful to the ma, to Mayor Wu and Superintendent, Superintendent Skipper, and we are grateful that they're committed to improving the mental health of our students. And as a result, we will have multiple social workers available to support all of our summer programming with crisis response, program design, and stabilization. We are committed to being verbs, and we believe the best way to achieve our goal for the best summer ever is to help our kids power through their summer by really taking ownership and advantage of their summer through our high-quality offerings. I thank you for your time. I, I anticipate, um, eagerly anticipate your questions, and I will now transition to Chief Joel Gomir.
Thank you so very much, Chief McCarthy. Good afternoon. Bonjour tout le monde. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Robinson, Superintendent Skipper, and members of the school. I'm sorry, for the, members of the school committee. Thank you so very much. Today, we're so excited to share with you the enriching summer opportunities that the Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education has in store for our multilingual learners for summer of 2024, this upcoming summer. OMES supports and sponsors staffing in 42% of all Fifth Quarter summer programs, providing support through educators of, from multilingual learners, including ESL site coordinators, ESL teachers, and bilingual Paris. We are projected to serve over 3,000 or over 3,000 multilingual learners within all Fifth Quarter programs. But I also want to highlight that these are OMES-sponsored programs that I'm talking about, but they're multilingual learners throughout all of the programs. So many of the programs that you heard about through E S Y, through Chief McCarthy's wonderful sports programs and all across the district, and many other initiatives that you'll hear for students and opportunities, our multilingual learners are everywhere, and they're taking advantage of many of the robust programming that goes around the district and across the city. You may ask, what does an OMES-sponsored, supported program look like? Well, last year, I was able to witness firsthand at the Matter Hunt Dual Language Haitian Creole Summer Program, the intersection of valuing one's culture and effective teaching and learning. Students created multimedia presentations about Haiti's endangered species and ecosystem. They learned about nutritional benefits of certain vegetables while making the traditional seasoning a piece. If you've ever had Haitian food, you know, that's a really, uh, key part of the cooking. Build model bicycles and speak about the mechanisms in both Haitian Creole and English. Across the district, students are able to leverage their multilingualism while learning during summer. The summer is all about learning and having fun. Each program has an enrichment component, which can consist of activities such as sports, music, gardening, martial arts, STEM, et cetera. This year, we're partnering with Project T M I to provide dance, photography, singing, music that will be available at five of the OMES-sponsored sites located at The Blackstone, Mildred Ave, Quincy, Taylor, and McKay. We're excited because this provides an opportunity for our multilingual learners to elevate their voices and express themselves through art. To ensure our educators are prepared to support our students, we're focused on providing professional learning opportunities that are rooted in culturally and linguistically sustaining practices in programs with high concentrations of multilingual learners. To ensure a successful summer, we're actively engaging families of multilingual learners. Our own parent team will support families with summer registration, providing assistance in their native languages. We're also actively involved in district stakeholder meetings to inform them about our summer program offerings, especially targeting multilingual learners. OMES is dedicated to providing equitable and enriching summer opportunities for our multilingual learners. And now I'll turn it back to Chief Sanchez. Well, the musical chairs over here.
Thank you so much, Chief Gomir. Now, I'm happy to share information on how our families can register for summer programming and enroll in all of these awesome opportunities you've just had the, a chance to listen about. Families can visit bostonpublicschools.org/summer and click on the "School Mint" link, which will open the summer registration portal. That is bostonpublicschools.org/summer. Once on the portal, they will have access to program information and have the opportunity to choose up to three summer programmatic offerings. School Mint is available to our families in 10 B P S languages, and it is accessible to families on their mobile devices, which are two new features this year. In addition, they will see program descriptions and, as shared earlier, can choose up to three choices. It is also critical to share that placements in summer programs are prioritized for our students experiencing homelessness, our multilingual learners, students with socioeconomic status, as well as students with diverse abilities and receiving services in, uh, as identified, um, on their 504 plans or individualized education plans. This slide also shares information on, on our parent outreach for all of these amazing upcoming opportunities, including opportunities at upcoming pop-up events such as the Bike and Kite Festival and the Family Engagement Scene, where our team will be there welcoming families and helping them register for summer. In addition, we also have personalized outreach at the district, school, and programmatic levels. New this summer, or this year, I should say, we will also offer a centralized registration days here, right at, right here at Bowling, where families can come in and speak to our Fifth Quarter Team, as well as other, uh, site coordinators, and receive direct personalized language-based support to help them enroll. At this point, I will now pass it over to Dr. Tavarez as she will provide our closing remarks. Thank you.
Thank you so much, team. You just heard this incredible team share with all of you 126 diverse offerings for our families. That's 126 diverse offerings for our families. To consider the combination of both community-based programs and school-based programs. In addition to coll, um, collaborating with this amazing group of folks, we also have a collaboration with colleagues Charles Colley and Dr. Ted Lombardi, who lead the Charge for Credit Recovery. As you can understand, we have 2,100 projected seats to accelerate and innovate our students' learning. It is really exciting for us to be sitting here in front of you and share all this planning that we've been doing, and truth be told, a lot of laughter, too. Thank you to my colleagues at the table and our colleagues both at the district and city levels for their partnership and collaboration. Most importantly, thank you to our B P S families for joining us on April 12th at the Summer Resource Fair. It was our first one here at Bowling, and for entrusting their students to us. Madam Chair, this concludes our presentation.
I want to thank you, Dr. Tavarez, and your team. Thank you very much. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments.
Thank you. I want to say thank you, uh, for the presentation. I think that presentation is very important because the summertime for the students, um, uh, we're working for create a, uh, good memory, uh, in the summer. Uh, however, I want to say something about the presentation. I think, uh, the district needed more intentional, more respect for the school committee member when sent the information or the presentation because I represent, uh, large students, family, community. In my case, specifically, specifically, uh, we need to receive the material, uh, in, um, translate, we translate the presentation because I need you, uh, say, good question, uh, represents, represented my, my families, my, my son, my community, uh, is in acceptable, I think, is, is in acceptable receive presentation two hour before the meeting. Is, I think, is irreputable. If you, you receive the presentation two hour before. Appreciate that, uh, Anna Tavarez and, um, Magali called me, um, uh, before, but I need you, uh, the presentation. Please say more attention, more intentional, for respect, uh, the school committee, uh, before the meeting. I think the family, the community, the students need a respect about that. It's my responsibility with the school committee, receive the information. In my case, I need you there in, um, tra, uh, translate the document, right? I think sometime I'm putting the Lena Palmer crazy because I called the Lena Palmer. Lena, what happened? No, translate. So I'm sorry, Lena, because all the time I call you, he say, please, I need you there, information on time. Please, stop that practice because I need you more respect for interpretation the, my documents. And the school committee member, my position, I represent inclusion. Everybody talked to about the inclusion, right? I'm speaking Spanish. Now I'm trying English for respect everyone, for respect the people connect, public meeting right now. Pero I need you the document, receive on time, please. I have a question, pero I have that comment for everyone. Thank you so much.
And thank you for your feedback. We accept that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Did you have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, um, to the team for the presentation. Definitely seen a lot of options. I don't remember what I had back in 2010, 11, and 12, but to just see the amount of programming that has happened, or the planning for the, for the summer is appreciated. Um, and I just want to commend my colleague for pointing that out. I think a lot of times we tend to forget that there is someone in the committee that also needs the, the service that we keep advocating for, for families. So thank you for advocating, um, and pointing that out. I have a couple of questions. Um, first, I remember when I first came to the district, I was at Burke. Whenever I would hear that my colleagues were going to summer school, it was like, ooh, you're going to summer school. There was a bad, a negative connotation with that, and a lot of times it impacted the morale of that student. A lot of times, the parents were also like upset at that student because they themselves maybe didn't understand what it meant to have to go to summer school because they're doing some sort of recovery with grades, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, best summer ever, so how do we make sure that not only the students, but the families understand that they're not being punished? They're not being disciplined if they do need. But what they do need is that additional push, right? That additional support when it comes to, you know, their academic journey. So just wondering, like, what is the language branding that we're doing? So where, where we can take away that stigma that having to go to summer school, it's not a, it's not a bad thing. Some of our students need it for many reasons. So I'm curious on that. The second thing I wanted to talk about, especially with the, um, and thank you for clarifying that you all have, O M M E has sponsored events, but of course, our multilingual learner, learners have access to all of the program happening this summer. Um, I saw the different ways that you all did outreach, uh, with the Resource Fair that happened, uh, Digital World. But I do want to, you know, ask, uh, if we're utilizing also the family resource specialists, the family liaisons, and I'm sure you are, but just wanted to be able to have you all talk about that because those are also the folks that are on the ground and have connections with families that are probably calling them every time. Uh, so those are good, uh, point of, of, of outreach, right? To make sure that we're, we're grabbing those families, especially our immigrant families. Um, yeah, my aunt never really asked me what was going on in the summer. You know, like, I just feel like a lot of times our immigrant families just trust the district, as they should, but they need to know what that, what, what is being offered. And I know you've mentioned other things, but I just felt like family resource specialists and the family liaison tend to have that direct access to them. The sec, the third and my final question for now, pools. I didn't hear nothing about pools. I'm nervous. Um, and I just wanted to hear more. I know that a lot of the programming sometimes is B C Y F, right? But just wanted to hear what is the role of B P S? I mean, swimming, aquatic, uh, programming that might be happening or not happening this summer? So just wanted to hear if that's also an option.
So through your chair, for that last question, Ms. President, I'm just going to ask, uh, Deputy DePina to come up because we do have an update on the pools.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So it, it also takes a team to respond to all the questions, schools. But thank you so much for that question, that triple question. The fun part, I'm going to actually, uh, hand over to our branding officer. He doesn't know that I call him that for the best summer ever, uh, which is Chief McCarthy. But I'm going to actually take on your wonderful question around how our families being brought into the, the fun part of what summer can offer them and the many things that their students can participate in. That's not that old-school thinking of, oh, no, it's summer school. One of the ways, you already mentioned it, is the family liaisons. So, you know, with the leadership of Chief, um, Sanchez, the family liaisons are a critical part to ensuring that families not only understand what options are there, but how do I get my student there? How can I make sure that my student is really excited about that program? Especially in the schools that host different programs. Sometimes we, we think about, we're going to send the student across the city, and that is possible, but there are also incredible program opportunities within their school that they actually in. So those things are the things that the family liaisons are offering workshops, talking to parents after school, sending newsletters, all of the different ways in which many of the schools already communicate with their families, plus more. And then I don't know, um, Chief Sanchez, if you wanted to add.
Yeah, I mean, I think I would also like to add that we work very closely with our family liaisons, and we provide them with training, not only on the platform, but also on the engaging events as to where, um, our families can actually access. And the family liaisons are incredible because they play a key role in enrolling, directly enrolling families within the School Mint platform. So I know Director Nescos was here earlier, and she plays a key role in ensuring that our family liaisons are trained, provides the technical support, and they're a key piece in our outreach process.
Thank you so much for that. I was always excited about B P S, um, having family liaisons. I think that was definitely in the mix during my time. And it's never to, whenever I bring them up, I don't want to add more work. It's just about how, how, how are they being part of. It's just about how how are they being part or what what communication channels exist that these the disinformation, any initiative that should be, I mean, everything is important for the parents. But I just think that the summer is such an important time. Before you answer the third question about pools, just wanted to add one real quick. How are we making sure that newcomers, they're coming in the middle of the summer, are learning about this? Because I came in in June of twenty-ten. So what what it looks like for someone that might be coming from Kevere, June twenty-ten, June twenty-twenty-four? Is it too late for them to join a summer program? What does that look like for someone that's coming like kind of last minute? So pools and then newcomers that might be coming a little bit later in the year.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the school committee and the public joining the evening. My name is Samuel DePina. So just to provide a little bit of context about our pools. In our past MOU with B C Y F, B C Y F was mainly our pool operator and manager. And over the last year and a half.
I think that microphone maybe tapped it.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Just to provide a little bit of context, our previous MOU with the Boston Centers for Youth and Families, they were our pool operators and managers. And over the last year and a half, that's changed. And we've had to take on a lot of those responsibilities and learn how to do that as well. And that's been a transition that we've been working on with the B C Y F as well as city colleagues. And last year, if you recall, in summer two thousand twenty-three, four of our thirteen pools were operable. That was because of this coordination, the funding, the repairs, things that need to be done. We just need to put better focus and attention on it. So over the last year and a half, we've done that. And this summer, we're happy to report that of our of our thirteen pools, eight of our thirteen pools will be open. Two of the thirteen need large capital repair. Those two are the Blackstone and the Holland School. In this, for this year's FY twenty-five capital budget, the city has committed twenty-five million dollars to each of those schools for us to get going on those repairs upcoming. The remaining three pools can be operated once the vicinity is is complete. There's construction going on at those schools. So in short, eleven of thirteen pools are able to be open as of two thousand twenty-four, if not for the neighboring construction that's going on with those schools. So we will have a lot more pools open, but the programming of those pools typically fall with the B C Y F in our community and city.
What about staffing? Because I know sometimes we have pools, we don't have lifeguards.
That's still an issue.
Is that also more on B C Y F in terms of hiring?
Yeah, I will. I will say that I spoke with Chief Masso and happy to report because he is, he was a lifeguard. And happy to report, they actually have more applicants than they do jobs.
Hallelujah.
So that's great. So that's that's important. And the commitment to have all of our students learn swimming is, you know, in full.
Yeah, and I think it's just one of one of the opportun- I know you all brought up a partnership for worker empowerment, N Y E, in terms of finding opportunities. So I'm glad that we have a lot of applicants, but if we didn't, that could have been another role that your BPS students could. Thank you, Sam.
You're welcome.
So thank you. School commen- I'm school committee member Barbosa for your question about the migrants. That's a very important question. Before I get to it, I also want to highlight a summer program, which is Horizons. They're intentional ensuring that every student that is in that summer program has swimming opportunities. So even though that they won't be at Mata Hunt this year, which has a pool and the pool's opening, but we're not going to be at the building because of other work, they're still ensuring that there's swimming opportunities for students. So I think that's very intentional across many programs across the district. But back to your question about acceleration, well, about our migrant students. So the first week of February, we had an influx of migrants that were registered in this room. And that was the first weekend in February. But during the February vacation, Acceleration Academy, the majority of those students were actually enrolled in that February Acceleration Academy. That was such a quick turnaround that we were able to enroll those students there. And then for April Acceleration Academies, many of those students were enrolled. The newly migrant, the newly arrived students were enrolled. And so working for our office with OM and working with our other offices across the district is, I know, we have the ELAC, which is the English Language Advisory Council that really works to provide native language supports for our families. And we do a lot of recruitment for our newly arrived families to help support them and let them know of different programs and initiatives that are across the district. And so a combination of them providing native language supports and advocacy for families, but then also again, working with the family liaisons in each school, family liaisons, working with the L A T F, which is the language, the language access team facilitator for the school, and working with the ESL teachers identifying multilingual learners and also identifying newly arrived students to ensure that they are enrolled in programming for the summer.
So thank you for that. I think you spoke about students that are here right now. I think my question is more about a newcomer that arrives in the summer.
So yes.
So what would that look like? What would registration for a summer program look like for them? Or do they do they miss the opportunity?
No. So if there's space in that school mint program through that school mint process, again, working with the family, we have up until the last day of school. So if there's opportunities, if there's space in programs. So, you know, even the first week of summer, sometimes we're still enrolling students.
Assuming that the Welcome Center is going to be the main, I mean, that's the first place they're going to. So hopefully that information is being shared with them as they're trying to find a school so that the Welcome Center is also saying, this is happening right now. Yeah.
You answered the question for us, which is wonderful because that means that you know the process for when families come in June, July, August, because it's obviously ongoing throughout the entire school year. You know, families don't stop coming in just because it's a certain month of the year. And the Welcome Center and the Welcome Services Team is so meticulous around ensuring that they provide different opportunities for them to know what programs are still open. Because one of the things you you also have hit on a challenge. One of the things that they will face is that some programs will be filled. So that that's a reality. But for those programs that still have any seats or availability, absolutely, we enroll students that are coming in.
Hi. So just to really speak to the experience, to the what it means to have the best summer ever for a student. I think we have to talk about, let the students tell it, right? I think and our, we are judged by how they feel, what kind of experience we're able to provide our students from eyes open to eyes shut, right? If we have to account for every single hour within the city, not just BPS, like the city. We have to account for everything. So if a student gets up in the morning and they go to summer learning and they have a high quality academics experience, they could then go swimming, right? We have afternoon program, right? They could then play a sport. They could then learn. They could then go go dancing. They could then go to go to a community center. It speaks to a lot of the like, the cross collaborations that we have. But we, there's nothing that I could say that could change the impact of the of any anecdotal feedback a student could give us. So for us, in thinking about what we want our students to do, we to do and feel, we have to think about what they're, what is their response going to be based on what we offer? That's how we judge ourselves. So when we think about that piece of best summer ever, the experience, what experience can we curate for young people so that they could make incredible decisions and feel great when they come back on the first day of school, when we ask them, hey, how was your summer? Well, you know what? I did everything under the sun. And you know what? My mother was, my mother and dad wasn't mad at me because I was so tired when I got home. And that's what you want. That's what you want from our young people. And and hopefully, we were able to accomplish that, and we're going to work tirelessly to do it.
So community member Barbosa, you gave me the opportunity to shout out one of our amazing schools, and that's the Holmes. The teacher who did the Acceleration Academy, who ran the Acceleration Academy in April, her name is Lon Nugian, and she is Spitfire. She's one of the early childhood teachers who is so incredibly excited exactly about what you are worried about. She's like, ah, you know, and I asked her, are you going to do the summer program too? Because she's so incredible and so passionate about having this opportunity for the students of her school. Her response was, only if it's fun. So I think I need to introduce her to Chief McCarthy, one thousand percent, and also the educators that we have that are really excited for those opportunities for students to make sure we recruit them and we we ensure that there's project-based learning and opportunities to explore Boston. Because really, the learning and the enrichment on the academic side is critical as well as the enrichment and the learning that happens just in having fun.
I think, I think, having been at the high school level for a long time, high school students are not exactly ecstatic when they find out that they have to make credit up. And I think that part of that is because we've made it to be a hard choice for them. So if they had to go to summer school, then they couldn't do some of the exciting opportunities these guys are talking about. But they also couldn't get a job. So one of the things that we're working on is to be more flexible with the credit recovery so that we don't make a student choose being promoted over working in the summer if they need to or want to, or being able to do some of the amazing opportunities that are here. I also think that the, with the pandemic, there's been more need for the summer and year-round credit recovery for students to get back on track. And so they appreciate the opportunity in some ways, as hard as that is to just do work. But they appreciate the chance to be able to do it and to do it in a different format. I also think at the high school level, we're doing a much better job of high schools now with seventh grade and ninth grade entry of using summer months as an orientation for students. So more and more of the high schools are designing, welcoming opportunities for kids to come in so that by the time the student starts in September, they have friends, they have a group that, you know, they can kind of hang out with, and they don't feel kind of lost or overwhelmed by the school. So I think the high school landscape and that whole credit recovery and the work that, you know, Chief McCarthy and others are doing, particularly with the older kids, it's evolved so much from the image I had, certainly I lived with as a principal for years at the high school level, when you had to give that news and kid was like, no. So anyways, I think it's, I think it's in a much better place.
I definitely appreciate the flexibility of like, yeah, you have to recover your credits. You need to get a high school diploma, but still offering them that flexibility of getting a job or participating because those are still important experiences for them to learn skill sets that they're not learning in a math class. And I'm someone, I'm a, I'm a product of that because of of Burke, of the many extracurriculars that Mr. Guinness made me sign up for. But I'm appreciative of that. So thank you. I'll ask more questions in a different room.
Are we going to ping pong back and forth? Who's ready? Doctor Falconson, then. All right.
Thank you again for the the presentation. A few questions. The first really relates to slide four, just reading that we have the capacity. This is about high school credit recovery. So having, we have the capacity to serve twenty-one hundred students. My question is, is what is the change in the demand? And 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 so I guess like, where are we at in terms of all students that require that?
Yeah, so I got I got this one. So we will never turn away a student over the summer that's looking to make up credit. What we do is we basically budget a certain amount of slots based on what the school leaders and guidance are giving us back as to who they're predicting needs the credit. But we've been, become so good at building credit recovery programs during the school year that the summer becomes less of the only time. I think also that the bump last year, like the higher capacity the year before that we we sort of met and exceeded was really indicative of the immediate pandemic issues. We're starting to see less of that. The kids have taken advantage of, right? So now that said, there are other ways that the kids use the, you know, the online system, and it isn't always just recovery. Right? Sometimes it's enrichment or to get other kinds of credits or, you know, et cetera. So but there's never going to be a situation in which a kid, in which a high school kid wants to make up a credit and needs to, and we turn the kid away.
No, that's that's also helpful. And I mean, I think this also goes back to a previous comment I had around switching to the summer learning academies, why we need the data to be able to then communicate to families like why it's so important for academic outcomes as we see this year round. My my other question, just asking based upon what we also, we heard a little bit earlier, we're using the BPS helpline as a method of outreach, just given what we heard around a turnover in in that particular department. Hopefully, that doesn't compromise the outreach efforts that are going to go through the helpline. Oh, okay. All right. Second, I am also interested particularly in high school ages, particularly with, do we have a a list of sort of the options for employment for the students or at least the partnering organizations that either the PIC has gathered or things like that? I mean, I'm all about students getting paid during the summer wherever they can. And so I think about my own pathway of summer internships. So I think of programs like the Pathway Initiative, Biomedical Sciences Career Program, Project Leah, a number of others that are getting students into internships currently and just making sure that they're staying there and being paid, and then thinking about career options thereafter. So I'm really wondering the the diversity of the options that that we have in the partnership built.
Yes, I I love this question. So this is an area like we intend to put so much effort and resource as the high schools become those anchor institutions in the different careers. But right now, like Ted Lombardi and the secondary office shop with the career connections, any of the high schools that have those, they work immediately to figure out whether they have career partner, their business partners, what they can offer for the student in the area that they're studying or that they want to. Additionally, the city is working with us in partnership through PIC to generate more internships in the various industry areas. So this is just an area that's going to grow and grow. We'll have numbers like once the job numbers settle, but it's much larger than it was last year.
Thank you. And then my last question is based upon something, sort of a previous dialogue that we were all having around schools utilizing that summertime for student orientations and things like that. This becomes especially important as we're merging communities and like these communities become very new to everyone. I'm curious, what are we then also doing for families? Like if to come in with those students to be able to have that same level of orientation?
Yeah, this is a great question. I think that it's varying right now as to how the high school is approaching it. But it's like, it's it's definitely like a best practice that there's parent day and then there's student days, right? To be able to come on campus, meet the principal, meet the staff, you know, who are there, be able to get a tour. And then there's a more formal. I just feel like it's like a lifeline. And then there's like a more formal, you know, orientation for the students. Like some, some of the schools take the students to Thompson Island and like they'll do an actual adventure. We've been trying to figure out how to be able to better support what, you know, would be sort of like a ritual or passage for the kids as they're coming in. And I also, you know, I I think that doesn't always just stop like over the summer. I think during the school year, as students come in, it's also really critical that as they're coming in, they're kind of getting their their feet wet and they got a buddy and they're they're able to sort of navigate. So I think the schools are trying to approach it in multiple ways, but right now, those entries are a lot at the seventh grade. And and that's really where we see the high schools developing it out. And then for the high schools, obviously, that's not in ninth, it would be at the ninth grade.
Do we see that during the, do we see that during the school year for? Do we see that during the school year for families that are considering going to any school in the district?
All of the schools have been doing open houses. So any of the, any of the schools that they're intake grade. So if it's kindergarten, you know, any of like the pre-k early grades, or if it's at the high school seventh or ninth, the schools will do open tours and have days in which students can come in. Some of the schools, a little bit smaller, can also offer sometimes like a shadow kind of experience for kids. It's really hard to organize it because it usually means a kid's missing school someplace else to do it. But I'd love to get to the point where we actually could do that, where they can spend a day and actually feel the culture of the school.
Oh, yeah, I just think it goes back to, you know, I'm channeling Member Cardet Hernandez about like families sort of having this idea of what are my options? But if there's also that opportunity, I mean, granted, you have to do a lot to do that, to to be there. But if I'm a family to go there and be like, all right, well, then what are the options in this school? What are the options in this school? And then it's like, I'm feeling it versus sort of maybe seeing it on a screen.
Absolutely.
You know, so.
One, one school I will just shout out on this one is Madison Park. I think they knocked it like out of the park this year with the application for the first time. They offered both tours of the school for kids to come in and see the shops and like go. But then they also went to all of the schools in the younger grades to have students who are in those different career areas speak to what those were, what they were like, how they can, you know, how how they can get involved. And as a result, their lottery, you know, was well over what we ever anticipated. I think it was close to, Ted would know this, but I think it was like maybe close to five hundred. Ted would know this, but I think it was like maybe close to five hundred.
Ping pong back to me. I'm just echoing Member Palanco Garcia. We, like, I, I feel for you getting the materials today. We got the materials yesterday at one o'clock. I think this body is super special. We have like three working parents on it. Like, it's a diverse group of people. I don't, I guess it's like, I don't really care anymore like well, how it used to be. It's like, this is a very different body and it, I just. Feel like sometimes it's like not a real respect for our time. Um, and so I, I hear you and I know you're taking the feedback, but it just, it feels a little broken record and we've got to make it better. And I think goes back to what I will bring up in new business, which is we need a calendar of what is happening at these meetings. So that we're not just waiting till the, uh, the, the week of to know what's taking place. Um, and it sounds like there's an echo and agreement. Um. So some other things really quick. One, you guys are amazing and you're so excited about this work and it gets me excited about this work. So thank you for everything you're doing and, um, I've shared this before, but I was, uh, I grew up in a group home. I'm a former foster kid and like summer, I would have been a disaster if I didn't have summer program. So like summer programming saved my life. Um, two things, and I don't know what we can do about this. This is not a this year problem, but maybe it is actually. On the website there, you have to log into School Mint or Summer Mint or Mintment to get. Uh, you say you have to register, you go through ten steps. And you like emergency contact language, you speak at home, all the things, which is like fine. But till you do those things, you can't search a program. And so that's just like on like a user experience piece, which for me is actually, we use, I think, similar to how sometimes we use equity here. Like we use community engagement in a very jargony way. This is like a community engagement piece. It's like, how do I search for the program? And how from like a design perspective, do we build the website so that like, I can add a glance? No, okay, my kid's interested in sports. What are the five sports programs? My kid loves STEM. Where's the STEM happening? I liked, my kid wants to cook this summer. Where's the cooking thing? Because, eh, yeah, I tried to do it for my son and it was, I mean, it's twelve, it's twelve steps or whatever. And then I had to go through every school and then you have to read every school description to know what's out there, which like. There are worse problems to have, but if, I'm also lucky, right? Like I'm like doing, I can do this in my free time, right? So like, I can imagine being a working parent and being like, I've got to make it fast. And what you will end up doing is that you just choose the school, the program at the school your kid goes to. Versus the program that is really meeting the needs of that young person. So I don't know if it's a resource allocation. I do think in the short, I think there's a design piece for the future that we should really look into. And I think that's, we should be thinking about all of that as our community engagement, like user design. Um, but in the short term, if on the website, we could list thematically the, the types of programs. So they know what they're looking for. And I don't know what the themes are. If it's STEM, if it's sports, if it's literacy, if it, you know, you plug it in. Um, that's just like feedback. That's like a, that's a technical feedback that I think will make a big difference. Um.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think. Um, I think it's, it's sort of like having a public facing that doesn't require authentication. Right? To be able to then scroll and look. And I think the, the querying could just be easier. Uh, so you put in like maybe two or three criteria and then you can pull up a list and, you know, you don't have to go very deep into it. So I think that's something we can work on. I mean, as you know, we're doing an overhaul of our website because we have the same problem. Uh, and so that website will just look much different, be much easier. It'll also be far more, uh, universal. Universally friendly, let's say. Um, so I think that's great feedback. I also say like, I, I will apologize on the materials. Uh, you should never get them that late. I think that, um, we've had to make some switches in this last month. Because of putting some extra effort into the long-term facilities plan. And as a result, we asked the summer team to go earlier. Um, we also recognized that we wanted to get the summer materials to you faster. So as a result, you know, we know what the saying of good intentions is. So it didn't work. So we apologize for that. Um, it's cert, you know, it's not reflective. I know, uh, the team made such a, okay, seriously. The team made such, you know, effort. Megan made incredible effort. I think everybody was trying to do it, but nonetheless, it didn't work. So we're very sorry for that. And we'll make sure going forward that that does not happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't ask a question. I just gave feedback and I hope it's helpful. The only thing I'll say on that is I think. Similar to how I imagine families who are choosing programs that they will pay for over the summer. They're really choosing it based on kid interest. And so I think it would be smart to like organ, really have like the planning piece of like, what is this pro? Who is this program for? Who's the user? And then what's the category it lives under? So that like, I, I in five minutes, I could be like, alright, there's three sports ones. That's what I gotta find on the website. Um, cause that's about how much time, you know.
It's also, I think, I think it would be helpful too, like for our special education parents who students are in E S Y. To know which of the programs have C three S Y.
Yep.
I also think like Dr. Alken's question about the data piece, one of the things we did this year was to look at last year. Attendance and choice. And then we really tried to support programs that students voted by going. And so having high attendance and picking. So I think we also then tried to develop some new programs based on the survey data of what students said. They didn't get to, to do and they wanted to. So you see that kind of reflected in the new. So I see it as like, like almost like an adaptive engine. We keep using the data to get closer and closer to what we know students and families want and are going to use.
And the last thing for the outcomes piece of this, and we've talked, we sort of talk about this at the end of the process instead of the beginning. The, not every program will have an academic focus, focus. Nor, so then there won't be like an outcomes goal, right? It'll be attendance. It's about keeping kids safe and, and busy over the summer. All good things. The, but I do think there's some programs that we are investing in that are focused on academics. And I am sta, and we talked about this at the end of last year, like what is the goal for growth during those programs? Like, is it worth the investment of the young person's time, but also the resources? Um, and I think it would be important, maybe it's, I'm sure we'll have another summer update, but like. The credit recoveries to the specialized high school preparatory, like what is the goal? Like what is success? And it can't, I felt like la, the last two years when we've talked about it was like just getting kids in the door, which is success. But like, what's the next level that we're going to for success? And it doesn't mean every program, but like there are key programs that have to have success indicators or we could, everyone could be, you know. Doing a different type of thing over the summer.
I mean, I think some of that is built in like with special ed to regression data. You know, to O M M E, uh, certainly with some language acquisition. So I think those are a little bit easier. Where sometimes it falls apart and I'll, we'll have to think about how to do this. But a lot of times you see like a particular school offer something academic, but it's not consistent across. So it's sort of very hard because they'll have their own particular goals to report out and then I don't know how to really roll that up. So we'll have to just give a little bit more thought to something that's more individualized. I do think in some of the departments, it's fairly easy to, and credit recovery certainly is because it comes down to how many students. Were able to attain the credit and get promoted and.
And I'll, and I know I'm out of time, but I'll end here. It doesn't have to be like every program has a success indicator. But there are some major themes here that we're creating. So I think you could probably pull out which ones are like, these are much more system focused programs. That are organized to impact something bigger and what is that data point that we're trying to impact? And I would rather not like shoehorn it, like, do they know that's the goal that they're targeting? Like, is that, you know? Um, okay, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I'm gonna go back to Michael and then back to.
Thank you. So the, the beauty of, uh, members, a whole bunch of members asking questions. I wrote down five questions that aren't asked and I can cross off two of them right away. Um, did, uh, as Dr. Alken said, I was concerned about the drop in, uh, availability for credit recovery. But the superintendent, you explained that, that it's your budgeting. So if more students need it, cause I love that graduation at, at White Stadium in August, right? The students that have worked hard to reach it during the summer. So, um, and then also, uh, as you told us, go to bostonpublicschools.org. Backslash summer. So I did, as you were presenting and literally slid over to the superintendent and said, well, you have to log in right away. Before you see any list, so with you a hundred percent there, like it's, it's a barrier to our folks. And I think there's more of the site coming, but the more you can load in about programs upfront, as we talked about, I think would make a big difference. Um, help me out, uh, what you, what you describe as fifth quarter in here, is that also Boston After School and Beyond? Are they doing their own programs? It, or that is the Boston After School and Beyond programs?
Yeah, we have a very strong partnership with Boston After School and Beyond and they support us with a lot of our community-based organizations. Um, and those programs within the fifth quarter have an academic component in the morning and an enrichment component in the afternoon. So, um, Boston After School and Beyond is our key partner in the, all of the fifth quarter work. Um, we also have the, um, school learning academies that are part of the fifth quarter. Um, and all of that work is done in collaboration and partnership with Basby.
And is that funded by Boston After School and Beyond, funded by BPS, funded by both? How's that work?
Uh, it's mostly funded by us. Um, but go ahead Superintendent.
So we have a con, we have a contract. Um, so there's definitely our dollars. But Boston After School and Beyond does an incredible amount of fundraising, uh, to offset. I don't know what the actual ratio would be. Um, but we're definitely getting far more programming and services than what we're paying for.
Thanks. Um, again, moving quickly through. So I did notice it appeared to be a slight decrease in the exam school initiative. From five hundred seats last year to four hundred seats this year. And my recollection of this, to follow a little history here, was there was first a program that was about three to four hundred seats. That was first come, first served across the city, paid for by Boston Latin School Association, put on at Boston Latin School. And then a couple of years ago, when we started to change the exam school policy and we wanted, we were trying to close the opportunity gap. And what we realized with the first come, first, first, uh, first come, first served was, it was. You know, parents who knew about it and signed up and we weren't reaching the students that we were trying to encourage to explore the exam schools. So this became an additive program that was also put on the table by Boston Latin School Association. And this is the four hundred seats. So I'm, um, I'm wondering, are, are there still two programs going on? Some first, some first come, first served and some that are in effect by invitation because school leaders nominate them? Are there two programs or is there one?
Thank you for that, uh, question, Co-Chair O'Neil. Um, the Office of Opportunity Gaps, um, during my, uh, oversight. Uh, when we worked on the program, it was mostly a program by nomination, uh, from schools. The first.
This was the second program that was added.
Second program, yes. Um, so we're focusing on that program. And our nominations are supporting the, uh, opportunities for our black and brown students, our students with disabilities. I'm sorry, and our students from low income, um, environments to create better opportunity. Um, for them to, uh, test into exam schools. So, uh, go ahead.
Is, is it less seats this? Cause you say it was five hundred seats last year. Is it four hundred? So was it a decrease in seats?
So, um, there was a decrease in seats, um, after the pandemic. Um, so a lot of parents, when we did a survey, did not want to bring their students in person. Um, so we've been really encouraging parents to come back to an in-person experience. We do have an E S I program, um, in the fall. It's mostly remote. Um, it was in person before. Um, however, we're looking to bring back an in-person opportunity for the fall as well. But the summer program is totally in person. Um, and this year it's at Boston Latin Academy. I'm sorry, Bo, Boston Latin School.
But i- it is a decrease of seats from last summer.
So actually we increased. Um, I'm sorry, yes, it, it is a decrease from last summer and that's based on capacity. At, uh, the Boston Latin School.
Uh, um, i- is that because of teacher availability or?
Um, well, we also share the space with other programs. Um, and so that's where we kind of, um. Four hundred seats was, uh. We thought was good capacity for this program this year.
Yeah, I also think if I, I, I think I'm remembering this, but, um. And Dr. Day, Dr. Gay does a wonderful job with the program and, and supports. Uh, but my recollection is we didn't fill four hundred last year. And I think this goes to the point that Dr. Gay is making, which is that parents are still not fully sending students back for it. I think we were about three fifty. And so I think that's why we lowered that capacity a bit. Again, I think it's one of those situations, if all of a sudden we get tons of applicants, we're not going to turn kids away. We're going to figure out how to be able to serve the students.
I think it would be interesting, and this is a, another question for, um, Ms. Hogan on her analysis of the exam schools. Add to the list of fifty seven things you're looking at, right? Is of students who attended this exam school initiative the past couple of years. Did they end up actually applying? Did they end up getting accepted? And quite frankly, how they're doing, right? So, cause this was a very intentional effort. We started about four or five years ago. I think it was pre-pandemic. So it'd be interesting to see, as Member Cardad Hernandez talked about outcomes, this would be a great one. We could actually.
Yes.
Look and see what the outcomes are. Is the initiative working?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. And I wanted to answer that as well and just to talk about our efforts around, um, progress. So we have a pre-assessment and we have a post-assessment to measure, uh, progress from the beginning of the program. And the end of the program. However, uh, we also want to measure impact.
Right.
Right? So to say, was the exam school initiative, um, impactful? In increasing achievement throughout the school year?
Yep.
So we're working really close with O D A, really excited about that, cause this has never happened before. Well, we were really measuring impact. We're working really closely with O D A. Just want to thank April Clarkson and Amy Goodnow and also Emerson, who's our opportunity and achievement gap. Uh, data scientists, um, to support us in developing an analysis where we can see whether our students are. Um, the exam school initiative was a great intervention to increase impact throughout the school year.
Excellent. And so it'd be great to see during the school year, but then also since these are fourth or fifth grade, did they end up applying to the exam schools? Did they end up getting accepted? Did they end up going, et cetera? So, and my last question due to time, thank you very much for that. Just to move to one other issue is about the extended school year for, uh, you brought up about the transportation issues. And I think you're planning about four thousand students, right? Um, students with special needs and. Yep, forty six. And about, about eleven hundred parents so far have, have replied. Either they want transportation or they want to be in programs, they want transportation or, um, or they don't want transportation, right?
Yep.
Um, what I'm wondering is what's the plan to bridge that gap between now? Because the last thing we want is a mess at July eighth, right? Where parents thought their children were automatically getting it. They've got it in past years. The transportation's not there. What's going on? How we, uh, because it sounds like, and thank you for really clearly calling that out tonight. You wanted the message to parents of you have to register, you have to tell us what you want in transportation. Not all parents get that message. So how are we working? Not, not all parents are watching school committee right now.
Right, right.
We're working with SPEDPAC. What else? With family coordinators, how are we getting that message out?
Combination of all the above. Um, I think it's important also just for clarity that specialized transportation is an I E P service. So not every si- single student with a disability is eligible for special education transportation, right? So it's so important. That's why we made sure, cause some of our families, so what you're seeing for the one thousand and ten students. We, we're ahead of ourselves because this is the first time we've been able to capture how many students are going to attend so early on this summer, before the summer, right? So not only are we looking at the fact that over four thousand students are eligible. So we've had one thousand and ten responses.
Yep.
Right? So when you look at the one thousand and ten, I don't have the slide in front of me, but I think over eight hundred students of the one thousand and ten. Have responded that yes, that they would like, because they would like to make sure that they opt to receive transportation. And we verify that it's on their child's I E P, right? And then we do have some of our students who do have specialized transportation, but they're opting out. They do not want specialized transportation. And we're trying to be strategic in making sure that we focus on students that are responding to our notifications. So that we can coordinate the transportation and the routes. So part of what we're trying to do too is making sure that we know that families need to understand, we need to know as of June fourteenth. But there's, there's, that's, that's a date, but it doesn't end, right? We know that we're going to get students that are coming in. We're going to get students that are moving in, right? We're going to get students moving in with I E Ps.
We're going to get students moving in with IEPs, and it takes at least five days for us to coordinate en route students. So we're hoping, um, because although e- each year we have close to four thousand, five thousand students, but when we look at our data, we're seeing that we're averaging close to two thousand students on a weekly basis that are actually attending. So that's why I'm saying that it's important for us to understand and to say to our families, we understand that you might want some downtime. You might want to take a break. You might want to have some fun, right? And it's okay to have fun because our kids deserve to have fun. So we want to plan accordingly in order to meet the needs of our kids, and I want to partner with my colleagues to ensure that not only are we looking at the IEP services, but we want to make sure that kids have some balance, and they socialize with kids that are, that are similar to them in order to have some peer activities and to be pro-social.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I just want to make sure to call that out. I see your colleague behind you from transportation, want to make sure that's-
Thank you, Dr. Seal, and and I think, um, really appreciate the, the specialized services team and the work they've been doing. We actually received the data for students who are eligible for ESY and have specialized transportation. I think almost a month earlier than we have in prior years, we've been able to get a jump on routing those students for the summer. And, um, I just wanted to add one additional thing that we're doing on our side is understanding that on that first day of ESY, you know, we're going to do everything we can obviously to reach families, but that there may be some families who on that first day of ESY reach out and say, hey, I do need a bus for the summer. I didn't realize. We're planning to have additional standby driver capacity beyond what we normally would have so that we can very quickly pivot and add those students to buses for the summer.
Excellent. Great. Thank you very much.
I just want to publicly compliment how the team's working together on this, because this really is like a, a cross-functional effort in this, and, you know, and this is going to reduce the amount of time students have to stay on the bus during the summer. And, you know, how frustrating it is when stop, have to stop, no one gets on. So students will get home earlier, they're just going to spend less time on the bus itself, and that's going to improve our ability to get kids back and forth as we should on time. So it's for lots of reasons. It's kudos to everybody working together.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the question that mine, uh, is very good. Some question that, um, Michael, uh, the me, uh, O'Neill say is about the transportation, because the last year, too many family, too many family, um, co- have a concern about the transportation. And, uh, it's important, pay attention, please, uh, for, uh, the tra- transportation special, uh, student special need. My question is, is about, uh, Title One, money, Title One. Uh, my understanding is, uh, that when your presentation say you use money, the Title One, how much you use for, uh, allocate exactly if a multilingual student or when putting allocate the money, the Title One money?
Um, I'm going to get it started, and then I'm going to give it over to, um, Chief Gamir. I think it's, um, really critical to know that summer programming actually has multi, um, funding sources. I know we're specifically hearing an ask question about Title One. Um, but we do have, there's Title One funding, there's Title Three funding, there's, um, grant funding, there's ESAR funding.
Yeah.
But specific to Title One, um, did you want to take that, um, Chief Gamir?
Sure.
Do you want to? Okay, go ahead. I'm going to pass it over to Chief Gamir, she'll share.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your question. Um, so when I spoke here, I was speaking mainly about OM-funded programs or OM-sponsored programs. And like I said, many of our multilingual learners are in programs across the district as well too. But when I looked at the budget for multilingual spending for summer, um, I drew from various funds. Our, our department drew from various funds. And the majority of the funds that we drew from, um, were from Title One meta-funds that were swept from last year. So when we look at FY from the fiscal year of last year, when we look at all the money that the schools receive for Title One, and that weren't used, uh, and we swept them, and we have up throughout this school year to utilize those funds, we took those funds, which, um, and I just want to give you an overall figure. So overall, our, we're going to provide more than nine hundred thousand dollars of summer funding, um, that goes towards multilingual learners. Of that, of the swept funds from last year, over six hundred thousand dollars from swept funds from school year FY twenty-three were used to fund this upcoming summer. Then we took Title Three funding, and we took over a hundred thousand dollars, about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from FY, um, Title Three funding to fund this summer. And in addition to that, we took about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, um, from FY Title One meta, um, so that that money isn't going to just sit there and not be used and have to figure out what we're going to do with it next year. We're actually using the funding that we received this year to put towards this year's, um, summer funding. So overall, the, the bucket of, um, funds that we're utilizing for multilingual learners for summer programming is over nine hundred thousand dollars, which is about nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And so I know that there have been numerous questions throughout the year in school committee about what are we doing with those funds? Where's that money going? Um, and yes, we do need to do a better job with all of our schools to make sure that we are utilizing funds for students for that school year, but, um, when we don't, we still make sure that multilingual learners are benefiting from the funding that we receive.
Yeah, I, I think also, um, one of, one of the things we saw, I believe, because of ESAR, was schools had more money. And so they spent the ESAR because there's kind of less restriction and not the Title One as much during those couple of years. I do not think that schools will leave money on the table with Title One going forward. So, but we will monitor this for sure and make sure that schools are fully aware of their responsibility with Title One.
That's a good point. You're welcome.
Great.
Yeah. You want to?
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, I don't actually know, but could you speak a little bit on costs? Like there are programs that families have to pay, are there programs that don't have to, I actually don't know, and I figured there's maybe some families at home that don't know that, and maybe discourage them to even look into.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Could you talk a little bit about cost?
All of our programs are free for our students. Our, our programs are at no cost to our families and our students. Um, and yeah, um, there are programs out there for cost, but not any of our BPS programs.
All right. Thank you for, for saying that, because I didn't know, I noticed that we didn't really talk about that throughout the presentation, and that is one thing that free, 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 whatever we can say right in the beginning to our families, that is a hu- a huge conversation. And I do, thank you.
Yes. You're welcome.
Okay.
Um, just because you had mentioned it a little bit earlier, how much of the, um, summer learning is coming from ESAR funding?
So thank you for that. It's, um, I, it's a number that I'll turn back and provide to you, um, just to be, because I want to make sure that I get the exact number. Um, what Chief Gamir just shared was around our title funding and our federal funding, but certainly ESAR, um, provide, there is certainly a significant amount coming from ESAR, um, but I want to get you that exact number.
Sure.
No, I'm, I'm trying to visualize right now, uh, the page. Um, and what I, what I will say is similar to how we're trying to step down ESAR in the general school budgets, we're trying to step it down in the summer.
Right.
So, so that we don't, because basically all of summer minus the title dollars had been on ESAR. So we actually injected this year into the budget to start to that, do that offset.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but we'll get you, we'll get you the exact, I, I, eight million is what's coming to me, but
Yeah.
I want to, I want to-
No, it was, it, the, the question just really came from a sense of like knowing that we have to use it.
Yeah.
Like, but like by September, but also giving me a sense of what programming looks like for next summer.
Right.
As a result of not having eight million or whatever.
I think it's, I think it's safe to say, it's an awesome question. I think it's safe to say that this will be an investment area for us next year in the budget.
Absolutely.
So.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, and thanks to my colleagues here, most of them have been asked already, but, um, one question, I, I know you said that there are some families that already have said they're not going to use services. What do we do? How do we encourage families who have children who would greatly benefit from services, um, but choose to initially say no? Is there another effort?
While we, while we do the magical chairs, um, and, and wonderful, um, Chief Seal comes on, one of the ways we do partner with our incredible colleagues here is with the family liaisons. The family liaisons are critical in really breaking down to families why it is important for them to access the summer opportunities for their student, even when they hesitate for many, many different reasons, and, and families have many reasons why. Sometimes it's because they travel back to their home country. Sometimes it's because they don't want their child to go, they feel like it's too school-connected and they want them home. And really, breaking down those ideas i- is part of the work that happens at the school level, and a lot of that work happens with the family liaisons, the teachers and the school leader.
I would also say that some of our programming is designed with intention, with the intention of having multiple entry points. And I think it's important, um, that we, we stress that because we understand that families go on vacation. We understand that some kids, some, some scholars, the, the academic side pulls a lot from them, and they just need that part of their summer. So some of our programs, our esports, for example, that starts in August, right, and that goes to the end of August, because after a summer of doing X, Y, and Z and touring the country, whatever you choose to do, you could come and get what you, get what you need. And I think those things are important, um, and it was folded into the, and braided into the, the design of much of our programming.
That's a great question, and I also want to add, as we look at building a culture of inclusion opportunities for our families and also for our students, we do know that some of our students with disabilities that they do attend fifth quarter, right? So as we look at the data right now, to date, we only have seventy-seven students that are saying that they're not attending, right, of, out of our four thousand. So we know that we're going to be getting more information and collecting more data, so we'll provide that information to you um, within the next month or so. But, um, oftentimes, some of our students would access fifth quarter. They might now access these phenomenal sports and recreational programs that are being offered by my um, colleague, um, Chief Cory McCarthy. So we know that some of our students will do that. So I want to say that as our students come back to school and as they have that IEP meeting, and we look at the goals and objectives, part of the discussion that the team should be having is have our student lost any of the skills or the things that they have been taught before they left, right? So the team is going to be looking at data. They're going to be evaluating those students as needed, and then they'll make a determination to see whether or not the student has regress or whether or not if they're in need of services to help them to meet the needs of their goals and objectives and to achieve those goals and objectives. And sometimes, based on that information, teams may decide that some of our kids may need compensatory services, which is above and beyond the school day. So we really try to monitor that very carefully, and we're hopeful that, um, hopefully some of our students are accessing some of these wonderful programs, and if they are, what we're hoping to do, like for example, is if our programs are in the same location, then we're, we're saying to our families, if a student is coming in just for speech and language services, but they want to go to one of our sites, you can get your speech and language services at that site, so that that way they have options.
The other thing I will say, and I, I know, uh, Chief McCarthy and I are working on this, but we remember last summer and our programming stopped, and then all of a sudden, some of our young folks were not making great decisions out in the community, and they didn't have any structure or any programming. So we're working with partners to bring them on to be able to fill that gap so that the programming can actually run toward the end of August, which is what our students need and want.
Yeah, that was my other question was about, we have a nice concentrated
We're not going to have that.
summer for July, but then August, the, 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 also, I mean, I'm not sure if, what is the relationship with the city around the evenings, um, as well as the weekends, because those are the other times. I mean, there's a lot of free time in the summer that kids can do alternative activities that aren't in their best interest.
I think, thank you, great question. Uh, historically, uh, we have, I feel like we have, I've been in the district since two thousand and one. And historically, we have let the, no disrespect to the city at all, we've let them take the lead. I think now we're in a situation where we feel like we have taken the lead, uh, where we are able to sort of ca- cross-collaborate on the unique programming that our students need. Now, we're not going to program our way out of anything, right? That's just, programs just really whet the appetite. And it, and it really increases the curiosity that sort of leads our students to the places they need to go. So as we look at working with the city, we have really worked hard on building strong relationships. Uh, I think those relationships are stronger than ever. I think the communication channels are, are great. I think the mayor's office has really met us, um, at the aisle and just said, sort of said, hey, you could take the lead here, and we could take the lead here, whether it's a facilities thing, whether it's a programming thing, whether it's cross collaborative initiatives. I think we are in a really, really strong, um, position right now to, as I mentioned earlier, to provide support and services and high-quality initiatives from eyes open to eye shut for our students in collaboration with the city. Uh, you know, everywhere, everywhere a scholar goes, there should be an opportunity. And I think that we focus on that, uh, whether it's a, whether it's a Friday night or Sunday afternoon, and, and and right now, if you look at the city of Boston, uh, we are able, we're the only shop that's open for kids on Sundays at Madison Park. We are the only one. And I think that is a loud message that we're trying to send to the, to the city and our friends at the, at the city of Boston, like open up more, right, and find more kids, things for kids to do, and then the results will come.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, for instance, like, uh, we have a hotline that runs during the weekend for mental health supports, right? That came out of kids' needs. Um, I think, you know, the work that, uh, facilities and, uh, and Sam's doing around the pools, super important to get the pools open. Um, so I mean, it's just, this is like really, we just, we, kids aren't here, like, they don't function eight to two. Their needs are year-round, twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a week. And we as a district and city have to support them that way.
Sorry, sorry Superintendent Skipper. I just also want to add the paid internships for our students with disabilities really also helps make a huge difference. And a shout out to Wentworth Institute for also allowing us to partner with them and have our students be available. Um, and also some of the things that we're doing through Green City Growers in terms of the community and farming and selling. I mean, so those are some of the initiatives that our students can self-select. So I think what we, what we're putting forward this summer is really providing a variety of, um, options for our students to consider, but I think reality, you know, after six o'clock, what are our students doing and what can they access is a reality.
And that was part, part of that, I'm sorry, is the, is the, is looking at the data, right? And the data for our students between eleven and fourteen, right? If we want, I want folks to think about what they are doing, right, and what they aren't able to do. The kind of, well, fourteen years are able to get jobs now, but like, we have to make sure that when we, when we are activating our thinking caps around our students, we have to look at that particular demographic and then use that data to sort of inform and speak to them on the ground level, hey, what do you need? Um, and then how can we help, or if we can't help, where is the direction that we can point you to? And I think if we are constantly progress monitoring our communication with our students and our parents, I think it tells the larger story and it makes our response come off and really hit, I almost used the, the, the student's term, I was going to say hit harder than, you know, but, um, land. So it makes it, it makes it land for our, for, for our students in a, in a really unique way, and I think that we have thought about those things, and I will not, I'll feel bad if I didn't bring up the high-quality partners that we have in this, right? Our higher, our, what they have been able to do is to close the gap for where we lack, whether it's in a building, uh, whether it's internet, right? Whether it is, um, you know, having a, a partner like MIT, having a partner like Boston University, having a partner like UMass Boston, and, and really to the credit of, of the folks in the administration, to really help the, help those folks to understand why our students are so important to their growth, I think that is really going to land us in a situation where there are particular outcomes that we could, we could attach some metrics, um, to.
I just wanted to add a, a shout out, um, that, uh, Chief McCarthy already began for our city colleagues that do some of the similar youth work that we're doing as well. And the superintendent has said this in several meetings, and I definitely feel it as someone who's been in BPS for twenty-five years. Um, I, the partnerships that we're building across from the city to the district-
Um, I, the partnerships that we're building across from the city to the district are stronger than ever. And to your question, um, Chairwoman, one of those things is opening up the city of Boston so it's accessible to our students, not just during those hours of programming during the week. To your point, what's happening in the evenings and what's happening on the weekends? Um, access to the museums, access to different programmings that are happening on the weekends in the libraries, like really using the city as another classroom. And that's been critical and pivotal, and I, I keep hearing about it from my city colleagues. And it's exciting to me to be able to partner with them around having those offerings expand beyond the classroom and beyond, uh, the schools.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I was going to, I was going to bring up the, how is B P S? And okay, so if there's a student that doesn't make it to any of the programs, sold out, great, amazing, good problem to have. But are we providing them a list of other activities or, and you, you, you just brought it up, Dr. Tavarez. I was going to say that because one of the great initiatives that we saw were the museums that are now accessible to our B P S students. So highlighting things like that, so our families or guardians that might not make it to the programs that you said today. Last question, is there any of the programmings that you all are offering this year, especially with the partnerships with higher ed institutions? Uh, col- uh, college credit courses that they're able to earn over the summer? Is that like a part of the partnership by any chance with some of these higher ed institutions, especially for juniors and seniors?
Yeah, the early college is extend, it, it does extend. So there are in particular cases, like U Mass has opportunities, Bunker Hill has opportunities. So that really gets done through the high schools themselves.
They're earning college credits. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to say thank you to you all. I mean, it was wonderful getting this preview so early on. And as somebody who sat through this conversation for several years, um, it's just amazing. The growth, the depth, the listening, um, the problem solving that we see in terms of meeting our families where they are, um, and continuously doing that, um, is a wonderful opportunity. So we look forward to your next update and are all looking forward to a summer of fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Best team ever.
The summer ever.
It's a summer ever.
Ever.
The summer ever. Okay. Thank you. Um, well, now we turn to public comment. No public comment, then thank you. We'll now go on to new business.
You got new business, right?
I always have new business. I am, no, I'm just putting in the request again for a calendar.
I've made that request and I've asked to make sure that we can get very specific details of the rest of the meetings for this year.
Got the dates settled up.
And things are settling out.
Perfect. And I just want to make sure when we get it, that we're tagging or identifying what is mandatory, what is just historical, um, and being able to differentiate. Because I suspect what, if we do another planning meeting, like that's what we should be planning around. What we either think is missing from the conversations, what no longer serves us. Um, and then I think we can frame it, the meetings more sort of closely around student outcomes in a way that makes sense.
Your goal. Agreed.
Sounds good.
Anything else? Any additional new business? All right. Well, that concludes our business for this evening. The next hybrid school committee meeting will take place in person on Wednesday, May eighth at six P M here at the Bowling Building. Um, like to take motion to end this meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion?
No.
Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? There are none. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.